In order, would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blake?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Raina?
Here.
Mayor Beland?
Present.
Councilmember Vander?
Here.
And we have City Planning Dave Stockman and another Councilmember Commander Wayne.
I want to thank you for joining us tonight. We do have agendas on the back there. If you haven't signed in, please sign in. There's an opportunity in our agenda tonight for floor items. If you'd like to speak to something that's not on the agenda, but you'd like the council to know about, please sign up in the back on the sign-up sheet. We do welcome you. This is our regular council meeting for the month of October, October 13th, 2020. And so I will call for a motion to approve the agenda. I will, in doing that, I would like to add an item. We don't really have a council spot on here, but I think it would be, new eight, nine, probably, item 10 would be to address the fire department well situation. So direction from the council on that. So if we could add under council items, fire department well. Any other items before we approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
If there are no other changes, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion in second.
I second it.
I have a motion in second. Any other amendments? Hearing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in second. Comments? Questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Floor items. Commander Heatt from the Sheriff's Department, you are up. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Yes. Not in uniform this month, so...
Oh, but you look sharp.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Much more comfortable in the uniform. It's easier to make everything match. But anyway, well, good evening, everyone. Just a quick update for the month of September of 2020. We did have 164 calls for service in the month. And some interesting calls at that, but there's a couple of the things that I wanted to go over. So I wanted to, if anybody has any specific questions about the calls for service, please let me know. But there was just a couple of the things this month I wanted to point out. One of them was a traffic crash we had at Jarvis Street and 223rd Avenue Northwest. That was on the 20th of September. And a dump truck was coming southbound on Jarvis Street, going to turn eastbound on 223rd Avenue. And a white minivan was coming northbound on Jarvis Street, and there was a collision there. It's kind of a, it's an odd intersection, and the mayor and I talked about this after the crash. By design, the way that intersection is designed, there's no stop sign going northbound on Jarvis Street, and there is a stop sign going southbound on Jarvis Street, and then one coming from the east on 223rd. So there's a stop sign on the north and on the west. The van was coming, going north, and the dump truck was turning to go east on 223rd, I think assuming that that van had a stop sign and didn't. I sent the information to County Highway, and I know they were going to contact the city in the event there was questions that the city council had about why that intersection is the way it is. But I just wanted to bring that up as a, in case you hear any conversation or anything like that, that the council's aware and County Highway's aware and is willing to answer questions if they can.
Yeah, when we discussed that, and one of the problems we have there is the northbound lane of Jarvis is Now Then in Anoka County, and the southbound lane is Sherburne, Elk River and Sherburne County.
Right.
So we've got a unique situation there. And I, it's always bothered me that people don't realize oncoming traffic doesn't stop.
Right.
And it's just odd to have that southbound have a stop sign there. When it's a dump truck minivan, it was...
Yeah, and ultimately, the driver of the minivan was injured fairly severely and ended up being airlifted to a hospital with injuries. They've survived, but there'll be a pretty good recovery for that person. So just a point of information for the council.
Lori, has the county said anything to you yet on that?
I haven't heard anything.
One of the last times I talked to them, I had given them, Mayor, I had given them your email address and phone number in the event. But if they don't reach out, please let me know, and I can get you, I can get the two connected.
Who'd you talk to at the county?
Jane Rose, R-O-S-E is her name.
Jane or Jane?
Jane, J-A-N-E. She's a supervisor in that area of the County Highway. And then just, we talked a little bit about this before the meeting started, but on the 8th of October, the city of Anoka had what started as a vehicle theft in their city. A concerned citizen called, thinking that a vehicle was being stolen. Law enforcement arrived on scene. They were correct, and the vehicle that was being stolen began to flee the area. Multiple vehicles actually fled from the officers when they got into the area. And one was able to be stopped, and that person was taken into custody. But another vehicle fled down into Anoka and then down over into Ramsey, ultimately where they cut off another vehicle on the highway and actually carjacked that vehicle. The occupants of that vehicle were able to get out. But then the law enforcement found the vehicle, and they started to pursue it up through Ramsey. It actually came up here into Now Then and went east on Viking over to Highway 47 and back south into Ramsey, ultimately where it crashed way down, probably about 162nd, back in a neighborhood back there. But that's not something we have happen very often here in the northern part of the county where people are being carjacked and things like that. But it is a sign of some things that are going on that we're seeing an increase here just in Minnesota of those type of things happening. So those people did the right thing. They gave up their car and just got out of the way, so they weren't victimized any more than losing their vehicle. So, and then ultimately, they ended up crashing into several squad cars at the end, and so some people had had some issues that needed to be dealt with and obviously a danger to people out on the street. So it was good.
But they were apprehended at that point?
Yes. Yep, two people were taken into custody there as well.
Do we know where they started from, or where do they reside?
They were not local residents here. I honestly, I don't remember all the details on that of where they were from, but...
I will say, that's the fastest I've ever seen squad cars fly by my house.
Well, and...
They were moving.
And it's tough, because it really changes the dynamic for us when, when somebody's willing to carjack somebody, they've changed the dynamics. This isn't just somebody that's running from a traffic ticket or something small and minor. We've upped our, upped our issue to robbery and stuff like that, and it just, that really changes things for us. It's concerning, though, because they're dangerous, pursuits like that are just, they're dangerous.
All right, you know, and I want to appreciate, I was talking with the law enforcement in some of the other cities at a meeting this week with the league. And the Anoka County Sheriff's Department has an excellent reputation with law enforcement as partners. Those that were in Anoka County but have their own police departments couldn't say enough good about Sheriff Stewart and the team you guys put together over there, so...
Very nice.
Your peers are saying wonderful things about you, and Sheriff Stewart has a wonderful reputation as a no-nonsense. We will keep law and order in this county, and we appreciate that, because as things creep out or slip out from the inner cities, we need to know that, as Sheriff Stewart made clear at Lake George this summer...
Yeah.
This is Anoka County, and we do abide by the laws of ours. We appreciate that.
Well, thank you for mentioning it.
And your peers do well as well, so...
Thank you. And I apologize for going long with just a couple of quick things for the council's knowledge. We are, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So if you swing by the sheriff's office in the dark, we actually have the front of it lit up with purple, which is to signify domestic violence, which is kind of cool. It's nice for us to be able to, instead of just responding to the calls, help, we've been doing some stuff on social media and then also with the purple lights at the office. Hopefully, people get a little bit more idea of, of the issue of domestic violence in our communities. And then just with breast cancer awareness, just like everyone else in the nation, we've got people internally that are survivors or have had family members that have had issues. So one of the things we've done is, you'll see some of our deputies out with pink patches on their uniforms, pink badges, and I have a pink lapel pin on my jacket tonight, but all of those were purchased by staff members, and then all the proceeds of that go to a couple of different cancer foundations that we're supporting. So just kind of a couple of different neat things we're trying to do to help raise awareness and do something different, so...
We appreciate that. That's, that's part of the partnership, so...
Yeah. And then just last, a piece of information for the city or any citizens. On the 24th, we're hosting a prescription drug takeback day on Saturday. So if any residents or have any prescription drug takeback or prescription drugs they'd like to dispose of, they're welcome to drive down to the sheriff's office, and we can get rid of them for you. All you have to do is drive in the parking lot and drop them off, no questions asked. You don't have to take anything out of containers, just show up and drop them off, and we will get them disposed of.
You all right with the council? Can we ask Lori to put that on our website?
And if you need any artwork or the, any links to like our website or anything, just let me know, and I can get you that, so you don't have to recreate the wheel. And that's all I have.
Great. Council, any questions?
No.
With Commander?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Councilmember Brian?
One question for the commander. Did, I saw in the last sheriff's report about, for the calls, where the formula changed?
Yes, and in, in the, in the light of brevity, I was going to bring that up at next month's meeting, but yes, you're right, it did. One of our commanders actually found a glitch, and, and the council knows, I can't tell you how many times I've stood before you and tell you the glitches we found in the reporting system. Yes, there was a glitch found, but it was nice, one of our commanders found it. We went back, and we've rerun the numbers, and then, and instead of relying on somebody else to provide this data for us, we actually have people trained in-house now to do it, because we're just, what we've been getting hasn't been satisfactory, and so now we'll be doing it in-house. And it has been rectified. And just like I said with the other issues that we found months ago, when we base our calls for service and things like that, we're going to use numbers that we know are accurate, and we know that there's been a, some issues with some of the numbers. So when it comes to things like contract, and if there was ever any increase or anything like that, we will make sure that accurate reporting is what we're being used to base those numbers on.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks. Anything else? Thank you very much, Commander. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night, Commander. Engineering, we have a couple of things on road improvements. We have two resolutions ordering feasibility studies, and a question on one of those in the Rogers Lake area, including an upgrade of the gravel portion of 185th Lane from Yakima West affecting two houses. Counsel, get a chance to look at that material from the engineer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian?
I was just wondering, I was just thinking about that. I'm going, do we even plow that in the winter? Because that would be a gravel road, that we theoretically need to bring the grader down there. For the number of houses that it added on, I think we'd really include, what, two more houses in there? Or we wouldn't include any more houses in there, but that whole road would we blacktop? And is it just that part, or does it actually, how, does it actually wind around? Yeah, so, so we're not, so we're including, we'd be including, well, let me say it a different way. Today, would House 56 and 57 be a partial share if we didn't do that blacktop there?
My understanding is that they have no way out except to go on the part that's being done, so it would be full share.
Full share, okay.
So they had an option, it would be a partial. And because the proposal here is to take this road back to its gravel base, turn the blacktop back into the base, it would seem prudent, since we're redoing all these roads down to, so they reconstruct, but this time to include that, not have a piece of gravel that far away from the grader and everything else. To me, it would make sense to include that in the feasibility study.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raina?
Is, we, do we also, are we looking to, because that just kind of dead ends at the, at the yellow lines there at the back of those properties, are we looking then to have to do a cul-de-sac of some sort in order to be able to get the grader around there? Or...
We would have to have a cul-de-sac, because we have graded road, yeah. To put it up to standards. Other questions on the feasibility study, starting with the Rogers Lake area, which is Resolution 2020-54. Again, south on Ventry, 182nd Lane, Waco, and Urquiem, we would, at this point, try and tie in with Ramsey's schedule, which we don't know what that is, but let's do that at that time. So it would just be the items outlined in yellow, and the red lines are...
On the blue.
Pardon?
On that piece of blue.
Yes, I'm sorry, on the blue. Addition on 185th. Any questions? I'll accept a motion on the feasibility study, Resolution 2020-54.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raina?
I move that we go forward with Resolution 2020-54, which is the resolution ordering the feasibility study for what is known as the Rogers Lake area.
Second. A motion in second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the backside of that resolution, Resolution 2020-53, would be another feasibility study proposal for Ebony Street Northwest and Garnett in the southern part of the city, from 185th up to 189th. And again, this is for work that we would be starting this fall, but doing a feasibility study for the actual redo of the blacktop next spring. Any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
Yeah, we, this, we, we all know this has been on the, on the focus of many discussions, and...
Yes.
The attempt to just do an overlay isn't going to be enough, so that it's going to involve much more work. So this needs to be done to find out what we need, what we actually need to do, and how much it's going to cost.
All right. I'll accept a motion on the feasibility study for the Ebony and Garnett area.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-53, the resolution ordering the feasibility stud for, what is Ebony and Garnett.
I second it.
A motion in second. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, in preparation for those two road projects, as a council this summer, we agreed that the city would take, take the portion of work that was necessary in preparation prior to dealing with the batuminous surface. And so we have before us two sets of quotes. In the Ebony and Garnett area, Clerk Treasurer Strike, Joe Glaze, myself, Engineer Nelson, and a local contractor did walk through that area. We talked about what could be done this fall, what should be done this fall, so it can winter over and settle. And then what would have to wait in base work that the city would still pay for next spring, because it couldn't be seeded in, and there would be runoff and erosion that we'd have winter-over problem. So what you have here, the two quotes for the Ebony and Garnett area, there's a quote from Dave Perkins Contracting, and there's a quote from North Valley. It's quote number one, quote number two, and quote number three. So if the council wanted to break those up, or if we wanted to take them all as one, since the contracts would be down there, you'd have a mobilization that would hopefully be minimized by doing that. Discussing this with Lori, we do have the money set aside for this, or in the budget that would be part of our plan to repay with the bonding next year. So the money is available. Is that right, Lori?
Right.
So the money for this project is available. So if you take your quote, we're talking about, it doesn't say that on the Perkins one, but there's three quotes, quote one, two, and three, that is the Ebony and Garnett. North Valley, it says Ebony and Garnett on it. You'll see that North Valley detailed theirs out. Typically, in a more detailed process, Shane would be doing that, and they'd be quoting the exact same thing. So unfortunately, we aren't able to see apples to apples here. So a couple of things I wanted to point out before we decide on it is, I can't tell you exactly what's in the details on the first one, because we have just raw numbers. But if you look down on the notes at the bottom, there's specifically noted, there will be no haul-off of material. And this is an area where we're mucking out cattails and improper soils, so the ditches drain properly. There will be no restoration, and if there are bond is required, then we add 1.5% to that. At 118,598, there would be a bond required. 1.5% puts that at 17, almost 1780, 1779. So you would add that to that bid. Turf establishment, it says there's no restoration in this bid. If you take a look on the second bid from North Valley, turf establishment is in quote number one and quote number two, and that totals $9,539 for turf establishment. And there's no haul-off, and the muck excavation in quote number one for North Valley is $5,645. So if you total those in, it would appear that the Perkins contract with all those added in would be about $135,560, and North Valley would come in at $131,91653. Everybody follow that? Any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
No, this is good that we can get some of this work done still, let, yet this year, and make a, make a big, take a, take a good chunk out of the total work that needs to be done for both projects, especially knowing that, you know, we've been wanting to get into Rogers Lake and take care of those pits. Here's, here's our chance to get it done yet this year, and then give those areas time to settle over the winter for preparation for next year.
And just to be clear, we're still talking about only Ebony and Garnett?
Ebony and Garnett, yeah. So they're both on there.
We're only talking, at this first point, Ebony and Garnett. We'll take the Rogers Lake separately.
Right.
Because there's two separate bids, or quotes. And the work that's being done here is culvert replacement. There's going to be four culverts replaced, and there's going to be a ditch that's relatively flat, so we would be putting in drain tile in that ditch. And then the cattails that have plugged up the ditches so the water isn't running would be excavated out down to the root ball and then replaced with appropriate material. The roads would be left open where those culverts are dug out, and that would sit for the winter and settling. Any other questions on, on the quotes that we have before us?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raina?
I would just, I appreciate the detail in North Valley, because as I'm, was reading them, the no, 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 not included, not included, not included was difficult for me, thinking, what is that going to cost us to try to do that? Do we have staff internally that could do it? What's that cost going to be? Are we going to have to contract that out? What would the cost, would that be? So I appreciate the detail that the North Valley did, provided. And if there aren't any questions, I would move that we accept the, the proposal from Brad Schmidtbauer at North Valley Paving for the work at Ebony and Garnett. I second it.
And a motion in second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, turn over the Perkins, and turn to the last page. Now we're talking to Rogers Lake area. You can see detailed on, on North Valley that the 183rd, 183rd, Yakima, 185th, 183rd would all be repaired. These are the pits that Joe had identified. And so again, Joe went down with representatives from both companies and explained the work to be done. And we have a bid of $68,210 from Dave Perkins Contracting and $60,97508 from North Valley. North Valley noted that they do include the bond with that, and they're covering taxes, so that's, those are both all in prices. Restoration's not there. If there's a bond, it's 1.5 again on Perkins. And it looks like they would be doing hauling on that one. Questions? Councilmember Raina?
If there are no questions, I would move that the council accept the proposal from Brad Schmidtbauer at North Valley to do the Rogers Lake area. I second it.
All right, so I have a motion in second to accept the bid of $60,96508. Second, we have a motion in second, any other discussion or questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Spot, Scott. Scott Wally. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm here before you because it's been nine or 10 or so months since we started working here, and I guess the first thing I'd like to know is, how are we doing? As your building official, do you have any comments, feedback, concerns, anything we need to address?
When Lori's happy, we're happy.
Last time I checked, I was on track with that.
We've been getting good reports, certainly from the office, the ease of using your systems and the responsiveness. You know, my personal interactions with some of the things we had this summer, you were quite responsive and remediated the situation thoroughly. So I have not had any complaints at this point. Unfortunately, most people don't say great things either. We hear when people aren't happy.
That's right.
We don't necessarily hear when they are happy.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Trust us, we do hear when they're not happy.
Yes, that's true. So there are three things to talk about tonight. One is because we signed a one-year contract, there's a renewal discussion, which we'll save to the end. When we started here, it was right at the first of the year, and as a result, we didn't have any, an opportunity to review and provide comment or recommendations on the fee schedule, which we'll put at the beginning. And then if you're, maybe we should flip things around, I guess, the plumbing plan review discussion is really only relevant if you're going to keep me. So we could put that after the contract, if you want to do it that way. But if we're going to stay here, it makes sense for us to do plumbing plan review for commercial projects here, instead of sending it to the state for a couple of reasons that I'll discuss in a little while. So we'll start, I guess, with the fee schedule. And the fee schedule is articulated in kind of two different ways. It's a specific document that we generate, that we try and utilize within the city, because it puts things in a specific order that, A, we're familiar with, and B, makes sure that everything that's important in the building code that has to be discussed in fees is actually on the piece of paper. And when we reviewed the fee schedule, we found that there were a number of things that were not addressed effectively, I'll say. And so there are some new things on here that really aren't new things. But one of the things we try and do with our fee schedule is do some policy work. So the description of what a single-family home, a two-family dwelling is at the very beginning of the fee schedule, because that becomes part of what's going on. And at the very end, there will be a discussion about the idea of a refund policy. And the city is required to have a refund policy for their permits, and we put it in the fee schedule down here at the bottom, because there wasn't anything here before. So part of this is some housekeeping, to make sure that all the things that are required to be addressed by the city have been taken care of. And the fee schedule is generally a good place to put most of those things. The memo that was generated and sent off, which I assume you have a copy of, that looks something like this in your packet, will discuss the specific changes that we're recommending. And I want to start off with the idea that the fee schedule is the city's fee schedule, it's not my fee schedule. I'm making recommendations based on a number of things. I'm open to challenges, open to questions, open to rejection, not a ton of rejection, but I can take some rejection. But I think what you're going to find is that some of the fees, we're actually recommending you decrease, or we make other arrangements to lower fees and costs to the residents. And one of the reasons that I feel strongly-
For the record, I highlighted those twice.
Okay. The, one of the challenges that we have in acting in a code enforcement capacity is the idea that there's potentially an incentive for people not to want to pull permits. And if they're too expensive, if it costs $300 to change a toilet, that costs $300, no one's going to pull a permit for that. And I'm not suggesting that permit fees are $300 to change a toilet, but at $95-
We always do want to make that clear.
Right.
Because it goes out on video.
At $95 for a plumbing permit, in theory, that's the cost of a permit fee to change out a toilet, or do something simple with plumbing. And so one of our recommendations is to institute something called a fixture maintenance fee. If you're going to change out a fixture, and not change any piping, venting, or venting, or ductwork, then we should have a lower fee for that, because it's a one trip. We pop out, we make sure everything's okay, it's sealed at the bottom, blah, 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 and we're good, and we can move on. So there are some recommendations to lower fees, as well as increase them. The, I'll just give you the last little piece of the overarching part, and that is that you've been using, and I'm not offended by that, but you're using a fee schedule that is 23 years old. So the 1997 UBC, which is the Uniform Building Code, made a recommended fee schedule, and it was the last real recommended fee schedule that was put in a code. After the '97 code was published, the International Code Council was formed by ICBO, Boca, and SCCBI, which were the three agencies around the country. They merged into one, and they stopped publishing a fee schedule. So Minnesota wrote one in 2004, but that's really the only update that we've had. And so a lot of folks have been stuck, kind of, if you will, on the '97 fee schedule. And I'm making a recommendation that we increase that by 10%. So about a $50 increase on a $25,000 valuation permit. So it's not a huge number. I'm happy to talk about that when we get to it, but that's one of the other things I wanted to talk about. So if we could, if you want me to, we could run through the memo quick. If you have any questions, I'm open to, again, talking about any of those things. So the maintenance permits for roofing, siding, windows, and doors, $95 is the number you had, I'm fine with that. The plumbing permit, the fee used to be a flat fee. The code encourages all fees to be valuation-based, and it requires most of them to be valuation-based. Plumbing is one of the exceptions. We feel that the magnitude of the work should be reflective of the fee. So $95 for one fixture, $95 for a brand-new house, doesn't seem consistent with that in my mind. So our recommendation is a $77.50 per fixture fee with a $75 minimum for plumbing permits. So that's a $20 reduction that anyone would face. And then after 10 fixtures, it's $750 a fixture after that. So if you're building a Taj Mahal with 235 bathrooms, it's going to cost more, but that's also reflective, again, of the additional work that would be required. And then we would add in this plumbing fixture maintenance fee of $50 instead of the $95 again, so that if you're changing out a fixture that requires a permit and some don't, then we would have a lower permit fee for that activity. Going on to mechanical-
Okay, can we talk there real quick about, it says, so changing vent systems, running new drain supply lines, replacing, installing new ductwork pipes or vents is not fixture maintenance. What is it?
That's a plumbing activity.
So that would be-
That would be a $75, presumably, permit, yeah. Because the, just changing out the fixture, making sure it's connected, putting in a new trap, and the faucet, and connecting the faucet is pretty simple to inspect, but if we have new piping that's been looked at, there's supposed to be air tests done, and other things that have to happen or take place. So it's a, there's an elevated amount of activity that's required for that. On mechanical, again, you had a $95 permit fee. We're recommending $37.50 per fixture, if you will, or per appliance, with a $75 or two appliance minimum. And then we're also suggesting that we do a $50 fixture maintenance for that. So again, if you're changing out a furnace and air conditioner, we can look at those at the same time. We can do that for $50, and that's going to save people 45 bucks to do that activity.
So back to the gas line with mechanical permit, $12.50 per gas line. When you say gas line, how many gas lines typically would people be putting in?
A new home might have five or six. Depends on, I mean, you could have a dryer, a one or two fireplaces, a furnace, a water heater, the main gas line running out to the, to the supply, and then maybe one garage unit heater, or something like that. So there may be four, five, six, seven, something like that, in a typical home.
So $12.50 per line, 25 minimum.
Right.
And a gas line only permit, 40.
Yeah, so if we do, if someone's going to run a gas line for a future heater out in the garage, or for a future fireplace, we've got to come up and do the air tests on the gas line to verify that it hasn't been damaged in the installation, and then it just sits there. So we've got to come all the way up, just to do that inspection and leave. And so $40 is the number that we normally charge for that, just a gas line air test. Or what we recommend is a fee, I'm sorry, for that.
And then on the fireplace insert, it says, see above mechanical permits. Where am I referring back to?
If you're going to install a fireplace, then that's just a mechanical appliance. So it's-
95?
It'd be 75 in our case for the, because it's a minimum of two, but that's all it All right, so on the next page, permits are required generally to be based on valuation. The exceptions are roofing, siding, windows, and door projects, which are considered maintenance permits in the code, and then plumbing, mechanical, and electrical, which can be based on number of circuits, or number of fixtures, number of appliances, things like that. Everything else, in theory, is supposed to be based on valuation. And so some of the changes that we're making are things that reflect that requirement in the code. We would like to suggest, I'm not, I think there's maybe a mistake on that first line, create a minimum building permit fee of 75 in the memo. Oh, that's for commercial, I'm sorry. So let me, let's go through the, we'll jump back to the fee schedule for just a minute, because I think, oh, the commercial's on the top, everything's in order, I'm just jumping ahead. We would like to suggest a $75 minimum permit fee for commercial projects. And that's whether it's plumbing, mechanical, or building permit. And most commercial permits are going to require at least two inspections, maybe more. If we use the old fee schedule, $23 was the minimum permit for a $500 project, and we might have to make two or three trips for our share, or whatever that is, of $23. So it's not a huge money-making proposition. So we're recommending $75 for any commercial permit. The gas line minimum is 50 instead of 40 for commercial. Then signs, above-ground storage tanks, fuel tank removal, those would all be based on valuation. That wasn't clearly articulated in the, in the fee schedule before as valuation-based, so they are now. And then plumbing and mechanical would be 95, was your old fee, and now they should be based on valuation for commercial projects. That's what we're recommending. Same thing with fire sprinkler, fire alarm.
So in the commercial, the building permit minimum, plumbing minimum, mechanical, they didn't exist before?
I believe plumbing and mechanical were 95, just like a residential was. It was just, it was a flat number. And if you're doing a $75,000 plumbing job in a, in a commercial site, there's quite a bit more work involved than that. And so as a result, we're recommending that those be, and again, the state guides us to valuation-based, instead of a flat fee for commercial projects. It's the residential stuff that's allowed to be a flat fee.
Minimum's going to be 75, and then it's going to go fee-based in valuation.
Right. All right, then on the valuation-based permit, sorry, jumped ahead before, coming back to that now. We've been using the '97 fee schedule for some time, since we got here and before that as well. The last fee schedules, you know, go back every three years, so there was a '94 fee schedule that was the same as the '91. 88 and 85 were the same, and then the 82 was the one before that. Everyone's progressed up to the '97, and they just sort of got stuck there, and some do the 2004 state, and some do the 10% increase or more than the 10% increase as they go to the next step, because there isn't really any new spot to go. So again, our recommendation is to go to the 97 plus 10%, so it's a 23-year-old fee schedule with a 10% increase. And again, on a $25,000 permit, the fee goes, in this case, from $391 to $443 on a $25,000 project. So it's a $50 increase on that type of, that scope of a project.
So let me, let me ask then, that the 10%, I got a little lost in the numbers. So on the 501 to 2000, the 10% increase is $3.05 per additional 100, would be 336, which it shows over in the new site. But the 10% on the 2350, or the 10% on the calculation on 2000 would be 6925, and we've got it 8890.
We are, in addition to the 10%, we're recommending that the minimum fee on the valuation-based fee schedule be $50 instead of 23. So it's essentially 10% plus $17. That explains your question. So again, to do anything for $23 is hard to get done. I mean, I don't mean to make that sound brazen or callous, but it's hard to do anything for 23 bucks, and again, there's a fee share in that too, so.
But then all the way throughout, then, the-
The $17 carries through every number, and then the, the numbers are increased by that 10%.
Yeah, I still have a little trouble with the math. It's a little more than 17, but, but the per 100 stays at 10%. So say on a $100,000, it's $7. The old schedule, $7 per 100, or per 1,000 over the $50,000. And it's 770 per 1,000 over the $50,000, over 100.
Right.
So those stay at 10%, but the base goes up, and that's why the numbers don't match.
Right. So the 23 goes to 50, that's the $17, and then this accumulation of the 10% at each level also goes up. So the, you were talking about at the, at the 50 to 100,000, it's 643 versus 720. So on a 100, that would be on a $50,000 project, if you look back. It's a 60, 70, gosh, where's my math here today? $75, $78 increase, 17 of which is the increase in the minimum, and the rest of it is the additional 10%. And then it would be 10% on the amount between $50,000 and 100,000. So it's, the numbers all have to work out, carrying their way up as well.
Yeah, that's where I got lost, because the base numbers go a little long.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, then, there are some fees that weren't necessarily discussed on the previous fee schedule, things like master plan review. The state requires that if someone wants to build a Lincoln two-car garage-left house, right, it's just a, it doesn't matter what it is, it's a house, same house, they want to build it 10 times in the city. The Builder Association, I don't know, 25 years ago sued the state, or sued somebody, and said, hey, wait a minute, you're reviewing the same house over and over and over again in the same city, and you're charging me a 65% plan review fee on the permit every time. And that isn't, that doesn't make any sense. So the state passed a statute, or a law, that said that there has to be consideration for this idea of a master plan. If you want to build exactly the same house over and over and over again in a development, we can only charge 25% of the permit fee for plan review, not 65%. So that isn't, wasn't articulated previously in the, in the fee schedule, and it should be here to keep us on the right side of the rules. If this, if the state reviews a plan, they always reduce their fee by, it's 75%, so that the local jurisdiction gets 25% of that fee in order to review that plan again before going to, to construction with that. That doesn't normally happen with us, because we do all the state review, we have approvals through all state projects and all other projects. So, but again, we wanted to make sure it was in the fee schedule, in the event that we're not the, the future building official, it would still be accurate. Demolitions were 95, those would now be based on valuation. Again, because it's not a maintenance item, like a re-refreeze side, re-window, re-door, the state statute requires that they be, and the Minnesota rule required that they be based on valuation. Retaining walls-
What is the valuation?
Of a demolition, it might be $3,000 or $4,000, whatever you're paying the guy to fold the house up and throw it in a dumpster and haul it away. So whatever that number is.
Okay.
And I-
And what percent?
Make light of that, but we don't roll up houses and throw them in dumpsters very often. Milton Holmes maybe, but not houses.
What, what percent is that valuation?
It would be on the fee schedule that we just looked at. So if it's a, I'll go back to that, if it's a $5,000 project, it would be $88 plus $15 for each additional thousand. So another 45 bucks, so $140, $133 for them. Retaining walls, fences, and sheds that require building permits, the code specifically says that a shed under 100, I'm sorry, under 200 square feet, a fence under seven feet, and a retaining wall not over four feet in height that isn't holding a surcharge, has to have a permit, a building permit. Anything under that is exempt from building permits. So those are all just projects that are based on valuation. Your seasonal swimming pool guideline, I think, indicated 75 before. We would also recommend that be a $50 fee. We only need to come out and look at it once. We want to look at a plan, just a, you know, give me a aerial shot of your house off of Google Maps, tell me where the pool's going to be. We're going to come out and make sure there aren't power lines close by, it's not too close to the house, and a couple, three other things. Check the box, as long as they set the pool up in the same spot every year, they have approval to do that, and we don't really care about that. If it's an in-ground pool or a permanent pool, it stays up year-round, then that would be based on valuation, because it's not a seasonal pool anymore. When someone moves a building into or within the community, the state building code requires that that building be brought up to code, essentially. It has to comply with the code as if new construction, which is kind of a weird thing. The exceptions are lead-in, essentially lead-in solder in pipes, because we all used to solder copper with lead solder, and the energy code. If the energy code wasn't exempt, anytime someone moved a building, they'd have to tear off all the drywall or the plaster on the inside of the house, and then re-insulate the house before they could move it, and all that stuff. So they've said, energy code doesn't count, lead-in pipes doesn't count. So what we do, what we recommend, and something that we, I guess, require, is that if you're going to move a house into the city, we're going to go look at it and tell you as the buyer, the prospective new person that's going to live in this house, what all the code deficiencies- code deficiencies are that you're going to have to fix. And if the windows for emergency escape and rescue openings are too small, that might be five hundred bucks apiece to have to put those in. If the, the stairway is too steep, or if the aisleways are too small, or the hallways, those things would all have to be fixed. Someone might make a decision not to buy that house and maybe move in a different house. And so, we see that as kind of a, to be forewarned is to be forearmed with regards to buying a, a house that you're going to move into the city, because ultimately, it's going to have to comply anyway. So, we do it in advance to make sure that they know what's, what they're going to be facing. So, that's the pre-move. Single families, a hundred and fifty, and an accessory structure like a garage or something like that would be a hundred. Then, the connection fee, I believe you already had it in there, was two hundred dollars for essentially the connection fee for moving that structure in, because we can't charge valuation on a house that was built somewhere else and brought into the city. That's already there, it's existing, as long as it complies with the code. So, they have to pull a building permit for the foundation and any work they're going to do on the house, on the site. But picking it up, moving it, and setting it down on the foundation isn't something that we get valuation on that seventy-five thousand or a hundred thousand dollars, wherever the house cost. So, the, instead of that, that's a flat fee for the connection fee for the house. And then, if they're doing plumbing and mechanical, there are connection fees for those as well. So, a garage would be two hundred, but a garage, or a house, would be a three hundred and fifty dollars for that total package, plus the onsite work that gets done. Manufactured homes would be two hundred and fifty dollars, I believe that was a number that was already in the fee schedule. And then, SSTs or ISTs, system, septic systems, I believe our contract has us at, is it three hundred? Three hundred dollars. And your fee schedule only had it at two twenty-five. So, unfortunately, you've been paying us seventy-five dollars more than you've been collecting for the last year, and again, just because of timing, and we started in December, and we, the fee schedule was already adopted for last year, there wasn't an opportunity to rectify that. But our recommendation would be to take that to three hundred and fifty dollars, because Liz probably does a very quick review on septic systems, and then Lori looks at them as well, and I think there should be some money set aside for that as well as for the work that we do. And we're not proposing to change that fee from our side, but that the city shouldn't be upside down on that number. I did a quick survey of communities around here, and in Dakota County and other areas where we work, and the, the fees in Dakota County are six, seven, eight hundred dollars for a septic system, including second soils verification. Many of the fees here are the two fifty-ish, but they add another hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars on for the second soils verification. That is something that we're doing, and so that would be included in the three fifty, it's the whole package. The language on the state surcharge is essentially that the state has a surcharge. They put it on permits, it's like sales tax. We have no duty, or we should have no involvement in saying what that surcharge is, because they can change it next week, and they can change it again three weeks after that. So, just to say it's required, and we're going to follow what the requirements are is really what we're going for with that statement at the bottom of that page. And then, the last page is just essentially a list of things that we want to make sure are clear to everybody. It's kind of the odds and ends fee. So, a reinspection fee. If I come up and do an inspection, and I have corrections, and I have to come back, that's not really a reinspection. That's an opportunity for you to fix a problem. If you call me back for a reinspection, and it's not ready, it's still, you didn't fix the stuff we told you to fix. If you don't show up and let us in, if the plans aren't there, if those kinds of things happen, we wasted our time and nothing got accomplished, that's when a reinspection fee would be imposed. So, that policy, if you will, is stated in that section, number one, there on the top of that fee schedule. Inspections outside normal business hours? Now, just to be clear, we've already been paid to do the inspection, but if someone needs one at seven o'clock at night, or five o'clock in the morning, we can do that, but charging overtime for that doesn't make sense. So, to me, sixty dollars an hour is what it should be, and so that's a ten dollar an hour decrease from the fee that you had before.
That's two-hour minimum?
It would be, yes.
Sixty bucks an hour, but it's, and adding, does that include travel time? Does it include travel time both ways?
Yeah. But it's, most of the time, it's going to be me, and I can get here in forty minutes, so I'm going to have a half hour to do the inspection and still get home and keep it under the two hours. So, it's almost always going to be. First of all, I should say, I, I've only done five of them in the last fifteen years, so it's very unusual. But if we get a commercial project that's got to keep going, they've got a big deadline, something that's really important, we might, you know, if they ask us, we will do that for them, and we need to have a fee for that. Inspections outside normal hours is the same, additional plan review is the same, special investigations is the same. The copy charges are the same, up to eleven by seventeen, I believe. We've added in a, if we're doing large format, twenty-four by thirty-six plans, it's a bigger cost, they're four dollars a sheet. Duplicate permit card, twenty-five, if it's a small one, fifty if it's a large one. It's an incentive for people not to lose their permit cards, I guess. They are not impossible to reproduce, but it's, again, they need to be onsite, and we can tell them they have to get a new one if they don't have one. The license lookup fee is currently set at ten dollars. It's actually, I, I don't want to, I'm not casting aspersions, it's not technically correct. The, the statute says that you can charge five dollars to look up a license, and you can charge that same fee that's in that statute that I just said to verify lead certification, if lead certification is required for the work that's being done. So, we wanted to break that out into a five dollar license lookup, and if lead's required, five dollar lead verification as well. Permit extension, that isn't something that's in the, in the fee schedule currently, and the idea is that if you want to renew a permit up to six months after it's expired, you can do so by paying fifty percent of the permit fee and finish the project. Now, the incentive there would be to do that early, if you abandon a project early, but then want to come back to it. If you are almost done, and all the work's done, you just didn't get the final, then it would be cheaper for you to get a new permit, just to finish the stuff and pay a hundred or something dollars for the value of the small amount of work that's left as opposed to renewing a permit. But this is an opportunity for someone to be able to renew a permit if they're early on in the process. After six months after expiration, permits expire a hundred and eighty days after the last work was performed, or in our case, we also have a policy that says if we haven't inspected it in a hundred and eighty days, we send out a postcard, hey, you got a permit that's about to expire, did you finish it? Did the contractor forget to call? What happened? And they say, nah, 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 we're, you know, we stopped, or whatever, that's when we're going to, you know, get to the right, and the expiration notices and stuff. But if they, oh, yeah, they finished that two months ago, we'll come up, make an inspection, get it taken care of, and close the permit out. A change of use is not something that was in the fee schedule before. If someone wants to buy this building and turn it into a drugstore, but they're going to keep everything exactly the same, they're not going to put up one wall, they're not going to change one door, they're not going to do anything. We need to do a change of use review to make sure that the number of doors, and the width of the exits, and the lighting, and all that stuff are still okay, and that's the fee for that, just that seventy-five dollars. It's about an hour's worth of work to verify that what they are doing is on the up and up, and that it's okay to be done. A pre-final inspection, there are some contractors that want us to come out and be their job soup, so they ask us to come up and do a pre-final, just to tell them all the stuff they're going to have to fix when it comes to the final. And if they're doing that, it's kind of like a reinspection, and we charge a sixty-five dollar fee, or you should charge a sixty-five dollar fee for that. There's an option here on a temporary certificate of occupancy, and it's completely up to you. If you don't want it, we should strike it from the fee schedule. If someone wants a temporary certificate of occupancy, because they have to close tomorrow, and they can't get trees, or the landscaping's not ready, or they close in the winter, and there's no sod available, or they can't get a driveway done, or whatever the requirements would be, a temporary certificate of occupancy is issued most of the time. One of the challenges we have with them is that someone has to monitor them. And we get to spring, and did they put in their sod? Did they put in their trees? Did they pave their driveway? Did they finish the steps outside? Or whatever it was, it wasn't done. It didn't necessarily affect life safety. We allowed them to occupy because it was safe to be there, but it's not finished yet. And so, our recommendation is that you consider having an escrow that would be, if someone wants a temporary certificate of occupancy, you have to write a check for five hundred or a thousand dollars, something nominal, but not free, so that there's an incentive for them to get the project done, so they can get their money back. And if we have to send out letters, and follow up, and call, and do all kinds of other things, that would deplete that amount slightly before it gets sent back. So, that's a recommendation that I would make to you, that you may want to add. And then, the last thing is if someone wants to cancel a permit. So, if I pull a permit and my life changes, lost my job, and I just turned the permit in, Lori got it, she sent it to us, and it's in the queue, and we haven't even started working on it, there's no charge. We just, you know, kind of tear it up, electronically tear it up and, and throw it away. If we've done the plan review, and it's come back, and it's sitting in the drawer waiting to be picked up, and they say they don't want to do it, they have to pay the plan review fee, and we would recommend twenty-five percent of the permit fee, because again, there were costs expended by the city to get the permit that far. But they could get seventy-five percent of the permit fee back, which I guess means they'd have to pay for the plan review and twenty-five percent of the permit fee, but they would be able to walk away without having to get the whole thing. And then, lastly, if it's a maintenance permit, like a re-side, re-window, something like that, there is no refund for that. So, we have a refund policy built into this as well, because the state requires us to have one. So, that's the recommendations for the fee schedule. And again, I'm open to talk about any of these or discuss them at length, if you'd like to do that.
So, plan review, if the plan review has started, and they cancel, that's a full refund?
They don't have to pay the permit fee, but they have to pay one hundred percent of the plan review fee. And when they sign the permit application, they essentially acknowledge that if the, it says in the, the little bitty, bitty language underneath the signature box, I attest that all the information provided here is true and correct to the best of my knowledge, and I understand that if I go, if I cancel this project after the permit's ready to be picked up, or after the plan review's done, I'll have to pay the plan review fees no matter what, or something like that. So, they've, in, in writing, acknowledged that they are, they have that cost, and this just mirrors that requirement.
Questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
To Mr. Qualley. So, are these suggestions you're making, are they consistent with other communities? Are we setting ourselves up for higher costs? Or where does this fit into the big picture if we look at surrounding communities and what they're charging?
Generally, these fees are going to be consistent with surrounding communities. I have not done an in-depth fee survey, but ninety-seven plus ten is pretty commonly used. I believe Ramsey's using it, or they might even be on the two thousand four, which is a step up. And the, we see maintenance permit fees in Plymouth, where I live, they're valuation-based, so, because it's an option, you can do valuation-based re-roof permits. So, a re-roof in my neighborhood's three hundred and twenty-five bucks. And so, ninety-five dollars is kind of the going rate, it's somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred and twenty-five in most jurisdictions. The septic is competitive with just about everybody else. It is an increase, and I accept that, but it's, it's competitive with what else is out there. And I think that you'll find that most of these are competitive, or maybe even a little lower than some of the surrounding areas. You're certainly not going to be an outlier with this fee schedule.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Spanish doctor.
I would also confirm, Scott, about the temporary CO and an escrow. We were going to establish the escrow for landscaping and engraving, so that is something that we could address.
Well, yeah, wrap it all up together, it's a great idea.
And then, I had a question, Scott, about when you, if you were to demo a, like a tower, a cell tower or something, do you require them to remove the foundation, or is that something you want to see us put in our code?
So, there's some question about whether I have the authority to do that, but my belief is that I do. And whenever we do a demolition, there are three inspections, a pre-demo, a house or a structure to verify that all the hazardous materials are out, an empty hole, which is essentially all the materials are gone, and then a site restoration or a final, which is grades restored, we've got some vegetation going, and we've kind of put things back to where they're supposed to be. And the only time we don't do that last inspection is at the time of a reconstruction. You're going to tear down and build a house on the same site in the same spot, so you're not going to refill it and then dig it all back up again to put in a new foundation. So, I would love to see it in your city code, but I will already be requiring that all those materials be removed. I just, it would be nice to have ordinance language that supports that.
That's what I was hoping for. We, I'm sure you've seen, some people resist that, and they like to bury...
They just dump the concrete back in the hole and cover it up with dirt, and the next whoever's the next user is frequently has problems with that when they try and build or utilize that site.
Or the landlord doesn't even know.
Right.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
So, and just to, to Ms. Strike, are you comfortable with these numbers?
Yes, I meant with, before, and we discussed all of the numbers.
Okay.
The majority are lowering.
Right.
Down for our residents.
Yes, yep. And then, the other thing is, what is the council thinking as far as an effective date? I think we need to look at our entire fee schedule. There was a start on it, there were, you know, I don't know where we are in that process of looking at the entire fee structure. Do we hold off? Does council want to hold off until we look at the other fees, fees that the city charges? Or start this? And does this need a public hearing to make these changes? I don't want to have two public hearings, if we could do it together.
And if I could just chime in on the side, my expectation was that this would be done with your normal fee schedule increases, and it would be effective one-one, would, was, is my assumption, based on how I know other cities work usually. So, I wasn't expecting anything unusual or out of the ordinary from that.
So, on that note, to Ms. Strike, then, do you feel that you'd have the ability to look at the existing fee structures and have everything ready January one?
Yes.
Is that sound reasonable?
Can you verify whether we need public hearing on that?
Yes, I believe that we do, that we're changing the fee schedule.
That's enormous.
Yeah. But I will verify that.
Okay. So, the recommendations, we will tie it in with the review of the rest of the fee schedule, and deal with it by December, so we can be known by January first.
Great. So, second order of business is, oh, I'm sorry.
Anything else from the council?
Oh.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian.
No, I like the idea where some of the basic fees are able to come down, and yet we're, we're getting up to more current than where we were at.
We appreciate that you would look at taking things down. When we talked last year, that's if you said you'd review them, and if you thought someone too high, you'd recommend taking them down, so we appreciate your following through on that. Good point. All right, anything else from the council? All right, next.
So, taking them out of order, again, because the plumbing plan review doesn't matter if we don't, if we don't stay. So, I'd like to discuss the idea that we did talk about last year, about this time, of we would try a one-year contract, first year, and if things went well, and there were no problems or concerns, that we would do a three-year renewal. And the renewal that we're proposing is essentially a one-page, we changed the expiration date of the contract from twelve thirty-one of this year to twelve thirty-one, three years out, and everything else stays the same.
Lori, I know you went through the search last year, and you had investigated. You have a recommendation? You comfortable with the three years?
Mayor and council, I have felt very comfortable with the way that things are going with Minspect, and we're getting to know the process, and a lot of help along the way. I feel very comfortable extending the contract out to twenty twenty-three.
Right. Counsel?
Hi. I would, if there's no objections, I would move that we extend the contract to Minspect through December of twenty twenty-three, last day of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Motion to second, any other discussion? Hanging here, any none? All those in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you. So, the last piece is, we have a master plumber on staff. The state requires that anyone who wants to do plumbing plan review locally has to have a master plumber who's been approved by them to do plumbing plan review. If you don't have that asset within your human resources staff, you are required to, as a plumber, you're required to send your plans to the state and have them be reviewed and come back. And I have personal challenges with, not with the state, but the idea that the state's going to do a review on this, and the state's going to do a review on sprinklers or fire alarms. And we've done the review on the building plan, and then things come back and they don't line up. The plan that got submitted for plumbing doesn't match with the building plan, or the plan for the sprinkler assumed that it was a 13R system, which would be good for apartment building, but we gave them allowances for building size based on a 13 system. As an, they're weird examples, and I'm sorry that they're probably over your head, but the idea is having things in-house is an advantage, and we can turn them around faster than the state can. So plumbing plans are, the plan review would be based on the valuation-based fee schedule, but the city has to adopt an ordinance that says that you're going to enforce the plumbing code, and you're going to do inspections and plan review, and some other things that are included in this, and this can be doctored up and delivered at next month's meeting after it's been reviewed. But in essence, it's saying, "We want to do plumbing plan review locally." Now, plumbing plan review only applies to commercial endeavors, so any single-family home, or townhouse, or two-family dwelling would be exempt anyway. It's only plumbing installations that affect a theoretically large number of people. So, a building like this, or a superet, or a gas station, or a, an apartment building, any of those kinds of things, any commercial kind of building that's other than a single-family home, two-family dwelling, or townhouse, would require plumbing plan review. And the question is, does it come here, or does it go to the state? That's, it's still got to get reviewed, it's just whether we do it or they do it. And if, if you're in agreement with that, and we can get the ordinance taken care of, we'll have an amendment to the contract for those two pages that will indicate that we'll do the plumbing plan review as well, and we'll be good to go. If you don't want to do that, that's fine, we can just step away from this piece of it. If you're asking me what my preference was, not because of the money, we don't make a lot of money on plumbing plan review, but there's the idea that we have control over the process, and it's a one-stop shop from that perspective.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
To Mr. Qualley, so do you have a sample resolution or ordinance, excuse me, ordinance that you could provide to Ms. Strike that she could?
I do.
There you go.
Yep.
She can take care of drafting that, or?
Yep. And then the letter that's been sent by other cities in the past that indicates to Kathy Tran, who is the section chief of plumbing and plan review, that we passed this ordinance, and it says all this stuff, and you sent a copy of the ordinance, and it should be good to go. So I'd be happy to leave this with Lauren. You already have this, don't you?
Yeah. Is it? Oh, okay, did I miss it?
It's on the back page.
Oh, on the back, okay. I apologize.
So, I guess I would like your, a direction with this particular issue, just so that we can get the paperwork in place for you to approve this at a later date.
I will accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
I would move that we adopt the ordinance where the plumbing inspections are done in-house through Minspect, according to the ordinance. Second.
Can I ask for clarification? Not inspections, but plan review.
Plan review, too.
Yep.
Plan review.
Sorry.
So let me clarify the motion, you know, because we haven't really discussed this ordinance amendment, and the amendment to the ordinance would require a public hearing. So that we would proceed with staff to prepare an ordinance amendment based on the submission from Mr. Qualley, but to meet all the requirements of that ordinance amendment, but the council's preference is to proceed with the Minspect to take over the plan review for plumbing.
Okay.
So is that, do you amend your motion accordingly, your second?
I agree. I do.
Follow that, Laurie? Okay. So, we have a motion second, other discussion?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, so the public hearing, can we just have that right before the city council meeting next month?
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe that, this is section nine, it's not part of zoning, so I don't believe there is a public hearing to this.
Okay.
We'll double check.
So, so if?
Double check. If there is, we can do it.
To clarify that, if there isn't the need for a public hearing, we would have that next month at our city council meeting, prior to the meeting, or part of the meeting, which, whatever.
And if there isn't, then we'll just hold on to the next meeting.
Hold on.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
It makes sense to have, I like the idea of having the work done closer to the actual project, and if there are issues, that it can be answered from Scott and Minspect in one source instead of having to figure out who to get ahold of and get the questions answered in a timely manner. I think it's going to just help keep the project moving forward versus getting anything hung up.
I also think with what the staff has been able to do, working with Minspect, they'll be able to facilitate that communication as well. I agree. Any other questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Scott, I had one question back on the building code fee schedule.
Yeah.
And the, the description, the definitions residential that you put in, IRC-4 accessory structures?
Mm-hmm.
The definition is a structure not greater than 3,000 square foot in floor area, and that over two stories and that. We got a whole lot of accessory structures out here that exceed that.
So, all that means is they're not allowed to be a residential structure. It becomes a commercial structure. It's still a valuation-based permit. The fees, if it's $25,000 to build a building, it doesn't matter if it's residential or commercial, it's just which code we have to look at.
That's what I'm saying, though, that if on a five-acre lot, you can have a 6,400 square foot building, and treat that commercially?
The, the, commercial's a bad choice of words.
Yeah, we've had that fight out here before.
Yeah, there's an.
Changes a lot.
The IRC, which is the International Residential Code, is the code applies to single-family homes, two-family dwellings, townhouses, and accessory structures up to 3,000 square feet in floor area. The International Building Code is for everything else, whether it's a water tower, or a dynamite factory, or a daycare, or an accessory structure over 3,000 square feet. We, we, I'm sorry, and we do it a lot. We call that commercial versus residential. It's not, that's not the proper distinction, and I'm guilty of it, I do it all the time. It is a residential accessory structure that's governed by the International Building Code, not by the International Residential Code. That's the only difference.
So what would a homeowner that's building a larger than 3,000 square foot, what would they see as a difference?
Generally, not a significant difference. The things that are different between the International Residential Code and Minnesota Residential Code, Minnesota Building Code are things like rise and run of stairs. There may be some accessibility issues that would be different. But if it's not a public, a place of public accommodation, then accessibility wouldn't apply. There may be guardrail heights that are 42 inches instead of 36 inches, that's another significant difference between the IRC and the IBC, but most of the time, it's going to be very similar.
So somebody's putting up a pole shed and putting a loft in it, isn't going to see a significant difference, maybe?
They'd probably have to see seven max rise instead of seven three-quarters in a house, and 11-inch tread instead of 10 and, 10 and three-quarter tread depth. So seven 11 instead of, I'm sorry, seven three-quarter 10 instead of seven 11. So a little bit shorter height and a little bit longer run. Might have to add one more step to your run of stairs.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
It's on that same thought pattern. So, if you were going to do a, let's say you're fortunate enough to run plumbing out there and do a lavatory, is there any major differences between the two, the 30, the 3,000 and a 3,500, or larger?
For the plumbing piece of it?
Or electrical, or any, I mean, is, you talked, the stairs, the guardrails, things like that?
Again, if it's not open to the public, it's, it's in theory exempt from the requirements of the accessibility code, but in that instance, I would argue that a plumbing permit would be valuation-based instead of the number of fixtures based. So that would be a situation where the minimum wouldn't be 95 instead of 75, and it would go up from there based on the value of the work being done. So that would be a nuanced change.
Okay. But they wouldn't be required to do anything over and above what they would in a 35, a 3,000 square foot building than a 6,000 square foot building? As far as the type of a restroom, or type of the electric?
Provided again, that, well, on the electric.
Providing it's just for their own use, for their family, it's not a?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a building people, other people are going to have access to.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockton?
So the, the, could you just explain or remind them about the engineered, you know, wind load?
Yep. So, if someone's putting up a post, a pole building or a post-frame construction, the, one of the challenges that's in the code, or isn't in the code, really is the right way to say that, is that post-frame construction is not in the code. It's not in the International Building Code, it's not in the International Residential Code. Pole buildings are an engineered structure, and as such, they require engineering. If you're doing light frame construction, or construction of a masonry, or some other building material that's covered by the code, we have a recipe for that. The code book will let us, tell us what we have to do. But because there are probably 100,000 variations of what a pole building might be shaped like, the spacing of the posts, the spacing of the roof trusses, how the beam is going to be established, the wall height, where the doors are going to be, how big the doors are going to be, you start thinking about all those variables and moving around the building wherever on the end, or on the sides, or whatever, then the code can't anticipate all of those possible outcomes or eventualities. So as a result, it says, eh, we're not going to touch post-frame construction, you need an engineer for that. And that doesn't change whether it's a 2,000 square foot pole building, or a 20,000 square foot riding arena. It's the same either way, we're going to need engineered drawings for that, and we've been requiring that all along.
Okay.
And it's, it's funny, and I want to make it sound too funny, but it is odd, that we've had people who build post-frame construction give us a set of plans, and we say, "They need to be engineered," and they say, you know, "They're fine," or "I talked to them, and they said it's good." And we'll do the calculations and determine that the footings are undersized significantly, and we'll send it back, we'll finally get them to buy into the idea that they need engineering, and the footings come back bigger than we calculated on mass. So the engineer's taking either, even another step back from, from where we would have required it if we were smart enough to know. But because there are wind loads and dynamics that we can't anticipate, because we're not engineers, depends on where the door is. If you open a door and the wind's coming from that direction, it wants to inflate the structure and make it like a, it creates uplift, makes the roof want to come off, makes the walls want to blow out. Those kinds of things all have to be anticipated in the design of the building, and that's why engineering's required for them.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockton?
First item is a permitted home occupation for gunsmithing on Northwoods Gunsmithing at 21532 Waco Street. So they're working with ATF on getting all approvals, but ATF knows that local zoning authorities are okay with the project. So I've drafted the findings for your review. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Do you have two other similar situations in the city, or which we've approved similar findings?
So what's the difference between a home business versus an IUP?
So the home occupations cannot be using your garage or your accessory building, they cannot be visible on the outside, so no outdoor storage or storage will be certain outside. That's the biggest difference.
Basically, nobody knows what's going on there.
Right.
They're going to park in the garage, they're going to, as they say, they'll.
Yeah, looks no different from the street, right.
And any coming and going would be just the normal, Amazon, UPS, which is a lot these days.
Yeah, a lot of this is done online.
We'll have to change our number of traffic patterns here, like.
Oh, the trips per day, maybe?
Yeah.
What?
Nothing. With Amazon and all that's going on. All right, so what do we need to know? We have done this before with the other residents. Council had an opportunity to look through the packet here, any questions? Or, Planner Stockton?
My only question was, a lot of this is done online, and she answered that, correct? I mean, that's why there isn't so much traffic, or what?
Right, or he might sell something by phone and meet somebody somewhere. He's, you know, the occasional person coming to his home is not going to alarm anyone, but if it becomes problematic and noticed by neighbors and we get a complaint about it, then we would look into that, and if he needs an IUP, or if he needs to go somewhere else, his business has grown to the degree, you know, worth affecting the neighborhood, then that's an issue.
But he's not going to have a building that says gunsmithing, John's Gunsmithing, something?
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the permitted home occupation to operate Northwoods Gunsmithing at 21532 Waco Street.
I second it.
21532 Waco?
21532 Waco Street.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, we have 8150 Viking Boulevard Home Extended Business for limited auto sales.
Mr. Scheller, made an application for an IUP, this is, Mr. Scheller, do you hear this?
Yes, sir.
Where you are? I can't really mask it, yes. At this point, he's moved to get planning and zoning. He, his home is considered interim use within this commercial, he's only visited. So that's why we're treating it like a home business while he's still looking at the properties. If someday the property is converted to 100% commercial, then, you know, we go from there. But for the time being, this is an interim use permit, and so we've been established conditions accordingly and limited the onsite sales to six vehicles being displayed in the driveway. Most of his work, most of his sales is also going to be online, or by appointment only, people coming to, just meeting him to look at vehicles. And he stays at the 24 cars per year is his annual.
All right, council's had a chance to look through the packet, and maybe you were at the meeting, and got a chance to look at the meeting online. Any questions from the council? Seeing and hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
I would move that the council accept the findings and decisions and approve the Home Extended Business interim use permit for 8150 Viking Boulevard from now then.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am. You're welcome.
All right, 5340 199th Avenue Northwest.
As of today, we have good news. This issue was a discussion regarding the paving potentially, or condition of 199th Avenue adjacent to the Burns Auto operation, which is, we have a potential new buyer, which is, it sounds to be in the control. And we had some discussion of planning and zoning, if you watched that, there, about how to handle that condition of the road. Well, just today, this afternoon, I got a call from Mindot, and they are going to pave that apron.
Great.
So, it's great. And I'll tell you what it is, it's a, a new thing that they have started a department called, they call it the Office of Advancing Equity. They deal a lot with ADA issues, but they are specializing now in these smaller projects which are more streamlined. They're actually, they felt this was positive because you're promoting these small businesses in the local communities. They physically went out and looked at it, and they asked me about local contractors who could do the work. And what they also want to do is train people locally that may not be familiar with state work or ADA work. So they will actually kind of search out those people. But I gave them several names of local contractors, and they will, they have to have at least two quotes, and they would like to try to get it done this fall. If not, she said.
How far will they send the apron?
Well, just to their, the edge of their right away is what I understand. So like 33 feet from the center line, which gets you out about, I think, to the stop sign, is from what I'm guessing, just standing there. I didn't measure it, but.
Yeah, it's not that far.
But it would at least cover that spot where it always rubs.
That's all.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Basically, they're fixing, they're fixing what should, their work that should have been done when they, when they overlaid.
When they did.
Yeah, right. So that's great news. And she said she'd keep me posted, and I'll share with Lori on any of the updates I hear. Didn't even have a chance to tell Lori today, so. That's the news for us to be, and who, then he would look forward to make applications for the interim use permit to continue auto sales there, as well as a variance for the buffer setback on the west side because he does want to turn the home eventually into additional offices.
Right.
So that would be closer than, you know, to those residential units or lots. So we would aim for the November meeting for that, if he can work it out with Swanson or whatever. And I did speak with, another issue at planning and zoning was regarding the paved area. We didn't want to affect the existing stormwater con, and so talking to Shane, he can increase pavement up to 10,000 square feet, but no more. And so if he needs to add a few sidewalks or walkways or whatever, parking stalls, handicaps, to me, ADA, you know, he can do that without a concern, so. That is all the news.
Yes. Liz?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Member Reino.
To Ms. Stockman, so question, and I was going to try to get out there, and I didn't. What is the buffer now? We need the 100-foot. What is it currently? Do you know, do you have that noted?
We measured it, or I measured it just on the aerial photo at about 85 feet from the edge of the house to that western lot line.
Okay.
So approximately 15-foot area.
Okay.
And that would allow you to, you know, ask for any additional trees or whatever, if you feel necessary or anything.
So does this, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Member Reino.
Ms. Stockman, would this need to go back to P&amp;Z or can it just come to council on this?
No, he needs a public hearing. He has only made concept.
That's right, it's just concept, conceptual.
Yeah, right.
Okay, excuse me, never mind.
That's okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Member Bryan.
So just to clarify, the asphalt that the state's putting in is the 33 feet. It's not the full all-the-way depth back to the driveway.
Correct.
So I just wanted to make sure, because that seemed to be the big question, and I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that.
Well, and as you saw with the packet, I mean, I researched how that came about and, yeah.
Right. So the question was, is, was that going to be?
Was that sufficient?
Necessary to approve the project? I just wanted to make sure that we're fixing the big problem at the end of, at the end of, end of the road there, so. And there was no, there was no requirement to pave the rest back, way back down.
Right. Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Planner Stockman.
My opinion is that there will actually be less traffic than there had been at the peak of the Burns Auto sales because not all his salespeople will be on site at the same time. So it's, it's going to be hard, I guess, to know if, when Burns Auto went in, there was a very distinct increase in trips per day, but because of all the other improvements they made, I'm thinking that's why the council backs off on the road issue. Now, you know, between the Burns Auto and now, it's maybe a little harder to show, you know, an increase. And you've got seven, six or seven other lots, which is another 70 cars per day potentially, based on just your calculation of residential trips. So, you know, it's still up to you. You could, Barbara, who stated that it is possible, like I said in the MO, to monitor the gravel, you know, or the dust control, but it's completely up to you from this point. But at least the biggest part of the issue is the gravel.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Member Reino.
Could I ask that, at the point that this comes back as a formal proposal, that we know exactly how far back MINDOT will go?
Okay.
And then how much more do we have between that edge and their north driveway?
Okay.
Just so we have that, so if we want to have any discussion as to whether that would be part of a request to the applicant, or if it's something city would look at, and I'm not saying city's going to, but I just, I want to know what that is. So where is, where is MINDOT stop? How much additional is there to the west side of their driveway, of their north driveway?
I think that'd be a good number to have, if contractors are coming in to do the apron, it might be an efficient time to get that done.
Yeah.
And that, that takes the concern out that the traffic from the auto dealership is contributing to problems.
Just so I'm clear, are you, I mean, the point of being here was to try to give Mr. Sanski an idea of whether or not you were going to require any additional work on his behalf on the public road so that he could come to a purchase agreement with Swanson? Maybe, so I guess, I just, I'm wondering if you're thinking of it for your own purposes or if it's still involving the property owner's request here.
Ms. Member Reino.
I'm just looking for it for information. I, I'm not saying that it would be part of any application.
Okay.
I just would like to know where, where is MINDOT going to take it? And what's the remaining feet that is still open? That's all I, it would not be part of an application, anything like that.
We are not, we are not encumbering the land at this point.
No, no. I just wanted for.
I think it's reasonable to say from a city's standpoint, what is that cost?
Yep.
We're not asking the neighborhood to put it in. At this point, we're not asking the property owner of the business to put it in. We want to know what the cost is because it might make sense for the city to address that at that time.
At that time, yep.
Real quick.
Mr. Mayor, I have some photos that might help answer the question. I did, I did measure from the center of Highway 40 South to the stop sign at 33 feet.
I think you can kind of see it on the photo here. The second photo, you can see what the typical apron would be there. And I, I would guess that's what your picture should be.
I actually have roadside pictures here. I have copies for everybody if you want.
Pass them out, and please stick one at the back of the room.
Thank you.
You're saying a stop sign is at 33 feet per block?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Stockman.
So we're looking at the aerial photo now, but we'll see the, the right of way on the north side of 199 is, is deeper than the right of way on the Burns Auto side. So I'm wondering if they would come back a little further even to meet that. But I will get that information. She said she'd share the actual, you know, bid that we're going to get it sent out.
And maybe, yeah, maybe MINDOT would be willing to do a little bit extra.
Well, that's, that's the question, if they can do something at, at their rates that we can afford.
Mm-hmm.
One more question on that.
Counsel, I actually live on the road in the last 15 years, and I think bringing it to the stop sign, the biggest problem is between the road right now and the stop sign. I'm actually going tomorrow to fill in the holes. I've been taking care of the Bobcat for years, and there's a few other spots that sometimes there's a problem if somebody doesn't burn out, but I would say most of the problems in that first 15 or so feet between the road and the stop sign. And so that's the only.
You mean the driveway?
What's that?
Are you saying the driveway and the stop sign?
No, the actual road.
From 47?
Yeah, 47. The actual 199, I take my Bobcat up there and grade it and take care of it, fill in the puddles tomorrow. That's the biggest problem is the first, I would say, 15 feet that I do probably four times a summer just to help out. And so I'm not saying one way or the other as far as coming farther, that's what I see in the last 15 years as the biggest problem, in the first 15 feet.
Well, that's good to know.
Right, so we'll check with MINDOT to see what prices. But at this point, if MINDOT's taking it back to their, I think the council can let the Swansons work with the Swansons and bring it back to planning and zoning.
Okay.
Fair enough?
So, I'm sorry. So if we agree on your note, so is the state's going to put the first, the 33 feet in?
They'll go 33, 33 feet from the center line, which will be about back to the stop sign. Beyond that, we don't know, but we're not expecting from the council's general opinion here right now, we're not expecting to make that part of your arrangement.
Okay, so then I don't have to worry about that so far.
Now, if we get, you know, we'll see what the numbers come in from the state, whether that even gets done.
So if the state gives you a reasonable number, then you guys are going to pick that table up or?
They're going to.
We don't, we don't know that yet.
Just wanting first to paving up to that first driveway, possibly.
And whose cost?
We would, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Member Reino.
We would see how much the state is willing to cover.
Okay.
And then once we know that number, and then we know what the remainder would be, then that would be discussion for council to have as to whether or not that is something that they would take on or not.
Yeah, at the city's expense.
At the council's, city's expense, yeah. There's no guarantee, I mean, council has to have that discussion once we have numbers.
Yeah, and have discussion until we have information.
Yep.
But it's good to know that they'll put the apron on that to the stop sign.
Yeah.
That's the biggest problem. All right, any other discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rainbergen.
Just judging from the comments from the residents and the news from MINDOT, quite possibly that apron could cure all the issues that we see right there. In the past, we haven't required it to be paved. So I would say we not require Rick pay. I think the apron would, in my opinion, I think the apron's going to solve the problem.
Well, I think it's worthwhile to check the numbers. If people actually stopped where it's legal at the stop sign, they would be accelerating on the road.
I think Rick wants a peace of mind so he can move forward with the purchase agreement.
Yeah, and I think that we've indicated that. You know, it might not be done other than the apron, but if it's a reasonable price, the city may want it to be done.
Either way, your side of the argument.
At this point, that's the council's opinion.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Sue Swanson or Jeff, do you have like a deadline date for when the previous users or tenants are going to clean up the rest of the, over here?
Hopefully by April, that it's cleaned up.
And it will be cleaned up, believe me. It's a mess.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
No, thanks.
Counsel, anything else? Good luck.
Thanks for coming.
All right, last item on planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Member Reino.
On the, the discussion that occurred at the P&amp;Z meeting on the RRA slash RRT districts, I, I was kind of taken back by what I heard. The planner had gone through line by line with the commission members, and other than minimum footprint of a structure, commission was in agreement with what was presented, and that was also information that had been presented and agreed, agreed upon by council. The submission of requests for changing, changes to the RRT, which is a legitimate request, I just, I'm not comfortable with those requests. And I did ask if Elizabeth, Ms. Stockman had spent any time on it because P&amp;Z had requested that she investigate the requests of the developer, and that was, to me, that should have been a council direction and not a direction of the planning and zoning. So I, I'm happy, or I'm comfortable with what was initially presented. We still, I think, have a discussion on the issue of footprint of a house, the size of footprint of a house. So I would, I would prefer that Ms. Stockman not put any time and effort into the recommendations provided by the developer who is going to be developing this area and provide, you know, based on his conversation, his own words, he's doing this, that there's, it's saving him money, and it's not our job to save a developer money when he's coming to develop locations. I had also asked in the strike, he had submitted some numbers, and I'm just, I was wondering, was curious as where, where those numbers came from, because when I went back through our invoices from our building officials, both the Rum River and Minspect, my numbers were, I found different than what the developer had said as far as new homes starts. I don't have septic information, but as far as new homes starts, Nalven's been consistent in, in the number of homes that they've been building over the years. I've yet to have anybody come to me and say, I want 500 homes down the block for me. So I, I don't know, I just, I, I would prefer that we just stay with, on the, on the path we were on.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Member Rainbergen.
I was perusing the 2040 comp plan that we had spent so much time on, months and months, and meetings and meetings, and hours and hours, both by council and by city planner to make sure we got our guiding document correct. One of the things that struck me in there was the rural, rural character of Nalven. Preservation of Nalven's established rural character is a primary environmental land use and socioeconomic issue for the community. The natural resources, land use activities, and development pattern that make Nalven a desirable community must receive special consideration as part of the planning process to maintain this quality of life. I think that sums up, in my opinion, the whole of the 2040 comp plan. On the heels of that, we had spent countless meetings, hours, and time with Liz Stockman, our city planner, in developing ordinances, regulations for the RRA, the RRT, and I'm very confident that the city planner did the right thing, and I like where it's at right now. I don't think it needs any changes. I think we could move forward and adopt it.
Ms. Member Bryan.
Had a couple of questions for Planner Stockman. Has, has anything like, I mean, that. Have, has anything like, I mean, standards throughout different cities changed, like more things are common where it is becoming more of a standard where you don't need a six, that extra six feet of a ditch for the, to go from a sixty-feet, sixty-six foot right away to sixty-foot right away?
I was gonna respond, there's, my thoughts on the whole thing. Obviously, your overall intentions and what's been written in the comp plan is first and foremost. Having said that, a two-acre lot is still considered rural. Even a one-acre lot is still considered rural. But in looking at the list, the ten things, there are, I talked briefly with the engineer just to get an idea of what his opinion was. There are things where we could budge and not be affected. There are things where we would say absolutely not, we're not changing that. And the sixty-six foot right away is one of them because we are a rural section. We need that additional width for our ditches and to get the proper grades and to get the proper cover over with the cul, driveway culverts, which will prevent heaving and such. There are other ways where I think your city engineer would be pushing, for instance, for lesser street widths, frontage on streets because it is more economical, especially when you go back later and are, are doing these projects on, in, you know, neighborhoods, resurfacing, or whatever it comes down to, you have more people to share in that cost. And you can still get the same lot size with a little deeper lot. So, it's completely up to you. What we could do is we could make comments on these things and give sort of pros and cons both ways so that it can be considered, but only, you know, if you feel that that's necessary. And I think we should respond somehow with comments and/or even maybe drawings of how these kinds of changes might look. I guess if you feel, well, obviously, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not feel that they had enough information to make decisions. If you feel you do and you don't wanna see this work done, then, you know.
So, we go back to with planning and zoning, you went through the entirety of the RRT, and the question was on the square footage and on the, the residential use of pole buildings. And that seemed to be the two things, those were both changes from what we had heard as a council. But that was the only discussion. And then, as I recall, they voted to approve it. And then, the developer got out. So, they, they were sending the recommendation on to, with those two items, but didn't they, didn't they make, recommend?
I don't know if they had made an official motion or if, because of the public hearing, they'd open that and then receive comments. But I believe they may have said, we didn't have enough then, or didn't feel comfortable.
Certainly when this came out, but I, I thought they'd already decided to move ahead. They certainly had approved everything. Maybe they didn't have the actual motion.
Yeah, the only other topic was when we said, you know, three hundred by three hundred was a little over two acres, so we had reduced that width a little. But you're right, I mean, they didn't have a lot of comments at that point.
So, I think you could, you could go to all the trouble of designing this up, and I'll save you, just drive over to behind Perkins and Al River and take a look. That's what you got. You've got two cars with the bumper hanging in the street. You've got narrower streets, so when somebody is not able to park in their driveway there in the streets, and so it is a little difficult to get around. We already discussed the ten thousand square feet with two-foot separation. That was a long discussion that you had with the engineer and had with the council. We talked about the five feet of parking, driveways being within five feet, parking within fifteen feet. I'm not quite sure that works because most of the time, the driveway starts out narrow and goes wide, so it seems reverse. But very particularly out here, we wanted that separation between the driveways. And again, if you go over in the newer development, just off Twin Lakes Road and go in there, you have some of these driveways where, we were looking at roofs the other day, and they're literally five feet apart. And this guy's got a huge boat, this guy's working in the driveway. I mean, it, it doesn't feel like country at all. I mean, it's, you might be able to center some of those, and so you have the distance. Or you don't, and the people put it right next to each other, it's, you, you can't put a tree.
Mr. Mayor, are you saying those lots behind Perkins are two, two-acre lots?
No, I'm saying the distances were seen.
It's not oranges to oranges.
No, the setback is.
Yeah, but still not oranges to oranges because they got two acres. So, you wouldn't necessarily have a boat in the street if you've got two acres.
No, I'm saying that if you have a driveway that's only forty feet from the street, you would be the same as this. You'd have a huge backyard on two acres. But if your house is forty feet from the street, that's the equivalent to what they have, they're forty feet from the street. So, the distances from the street, the setbacks, and setbacks on between driveways, you can see there, even though on two acres, you'd have this huge backyard, if you move this up to forty feet from the street.
Currently, it's proposed at one hundred?
Well, he's, we proposed it at a hundred feet from the center line. He's proposing it from forty feet from the property line, so that would be seventy-three feet from the center line. So, it's really?
Twenty-five feet difference.
Yeah.
And the property line is right away or?
Property line, forty feet from the property line is what he's saying.
Not the center line.
Right, see typically, in, when you do have a plat, you, you know, measured from property line instead of center line. But because we have so many rural lots.
And so, where's that property line gonna be compared to center line?
So, thirty-three, at that thirty-three foot point plus the forty. So, then, he's proposing basically a seventy-three foot setback instead of a hundred.
So, it isn't the same as the places behind Perkins?
No, but it's, I don't know what their exact setback is, they, you know, or what their right-of-way width is. But he's, Jeff's just saying, this mayor's just saying that there's not as much room in your driveway to park cars behind one another, and that pushes, when you have visitors, pushes them out on the street. And another good reason why we don't want narrower streets out here.
Well, on a two-acre lot, why would you want your house close to the road anyway?
Well, that, that's my opinion too, but I, you know.
Who would want?
Well, his, his, his statement was, from the developer's standpoint, less blacktop, less sod, and everything is reduced cost because you don't have a front yard. You don't have to do as much driveway, you don't have to do as much sodding, you don't have to do as much cost to the developer.
Putting the utility installation.
Right, and you're exactly, utility length is shorter. There's not a lot wrong with narrowing your lot ups. It does allow you a little more flexibility, and you may overall have less streets to build and maintain, which could benefit you in the long run. But, but yeah, that will push, a lot of the, narrow lot will push, you know, a lot of the pole barns or sheds in the rear yard instead of next to your building or next to your home rather.
Well, that's all right.
And it's not bad, yeah.
That's good, actually. Yeah, it, it becomes an issue somewhat when you're going from, when you're gonna city sewer and water, all these things, the cost at, when, if that happens.
If that ever happens.
That's huge for these people.
If that ever happens, correct.
The further back you go, because I know that from us, so.
Or even the narrower lot widths, you know, the more lots you have on the street, then the less cost per house overall, just either resurface or to serve it with utilities later. Who knows, you know, if that'll even be in our lifetime, but someday it will come, we just don't know when.
Mr. Mayor, I do think that we, we have a standard, and this is a country atmosphere, and, and we aren't a big city. And so, I mean, to set things back a little further does make, make it look more, I, I think it'd be even more attractive for people who buy it. It would look more like they had more land, the two acres, if their house was setback ways. So, I don't see that that, it's probably not as conducive for the builder, but it might be to his, his buyer.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm having a hard time visualizing it. Do you, do you want to do, if you've got more, if you're in this neighborhood, are you going to be doing more things in your front yard or in your backyard? And without a visual, I have a hard time imagining that.
Width, that's why I some, that's why I say, you know, like drawing a picture of different widths and depths may help with, if we place buildings and septics and pole sheds. But even with a hundred-foot setback, it's only gonna be, you know, a third or half of the way back, and you've still got, you know, a whole acre at minimum for your backyard, I would think. You know, depending on where the better soils are for your septic. You could easily fit, with a hundred-foot setback, you could easily fit your septic in the front yard most, you know, times, especially if there's no trees out there in your way. I guess in looking at the list of ten things, you know, the biggest, yeah, the biggest effect of how this neighborhood will look is the lot widths and the front setbacks. Because I would, my initial opinion would be not to budge on the street right away, not to budge on the impervious surface requirements, not to budge on the buildability because we already allow basements to go within one foot. And if you think of us requiring twenty-three thousand square feet of buildable area, that's only a half an acre of a two-acre lot. That's a quarter of the lot. I don't think that seems like a lot to ask. And, you know, I, I could probably go either way on this driveway setback, but I do agree that it's been, it's nicer to have that space along the lot, side lot lines for snow storage or planting of trees if needed. A lot of people don't get that close anyway, but if they had to, you could also, I believe there is a provision, or we could make one, to allow in certain situations, maybe, you know, on a cul-de-sac or something where your frontage is tighter, to go down to a lesser setback, you know, if approved by zoning administrator or whatever you wanna say.
Remember too, that those first six that he's recommending for both the RRA and the RRT, the last, last four is just the RRT.
Right, exactly, so that's, that's a different story too, right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
You know, you know, a developer always has the ability to come in and ask for a variance for something such as, like a cul-de-sac or this setback. I, my, my brother bought a property in Friendly, and it was, he was at the end of the cul-de-sac, but the cul-de-sac dropped down to a creek. He could not meet the setback requirement because he would have already been on the hill going down. But they would, he was given a variance because the front of his property lined up with everybody else's setback because of where he was on the cul-de-sac. So, there, there are times that maybe the lot itself would need a variance to meet certain things or to do something different than what the ordinance calls for. And if it's an appropriate request, that's something council can look at. You know, my, if you drive by my brother's house right now, you would not know that it's, it's, it's not on a place because it lines up with everybody else. Now, granted, that's a straight block, but it lines up with everybody else's front of their house, even though his setback is less, but he lines up straight with everybody else, and then his back goes straight down there. So, so a developer always has the ability to come in and request a variance if a lot requires something different than what the rules are. I for sure, these changes, would not wanna see these changes in the RRA district, much less the RRT, but for sure not the RRA.
That's council on due.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
It's my opinion that we just leave what we have in place, what was, what was presented to us by our planner and initially agreed upon with us, by us, and initially agreed upon by P and Z until they were presented with other options by the developer. We still have to discuss the issue of the, the lot size and then the, how we want to, the issue of the, the pole, living pole building type.
You say it's square footage in there?
Oh, the exterior material.
Exterior, but that was gonna be in a building, a different coordinate, so.
We'll verify whether the planning and zoning actually got a round of vote or not. If they did, we'll come to council. If they didn't, we'll discuss it one more time and vote. Any other comments?
So, Mr. Mayor, okay to move forward on the other things we've discussed, the grading, landscape, escrow, other changes, exterior building materials related to the whole process that we initially had discussed.
Council and agree?
Yes.
Any answers yes?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I just get clarify for this, and I just wanna make sure that I'm on the same page with, if P and Z is faced with something to look at, and it's a topic that they're, they've got all the information on, are they able to direct the planner for more information on that same topic, or is that not? I just, I'm not sure that is.
The practice has, has been to recommend a council for that, because council's authorized to spend the money.
Sure.
And, and they could be sending Liz on a project if the council doesn't want to engage the money yet. So, generally, what they'll do is they'll recommend to the council that the planner research further the information that's presented, is the way it's traditionally been. And that way, we don't have, you know, contract staff going off on things that end up not being utilized.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
So, along those lines then, if there's a, let's say, any private project that comes in, the, P and Z wants more information in order to make a decision, is that okay because it's not new information? You know, because that will hold up applications another month if they have to wait.
So, so again, you're talking about something where the private party is going to be paying for it.
Well, I'm thinking about it both ways. For instance, this was related, and I, you know, in some ways feel that I maybe should have responded, but knowing, you know, that we, this was our policy. So, I, I guess that's the question, is there a difference whether it's a city council directive project or a private project? And if it's already in process, does it matter if it's new information or? And if it's already in process, does it matter if it's new information or, you know, I mean, whether, it's not like, it's not like they were directing, let's say, to establish a new zoning district that nobody knew anything about. It was related. So that's where part of mine and our confusion came in initially.
Well, I think in this case, it was a complete redirection of what we'd spent months on. We've talked about this significantly and at the end, we just spent an entire meeting on it that they all agreed on and all of a sudden we got somebody standing up at the end of the meeting saying, "I want to go completely different direction." Starting out with, here's how many homes Ham Lake built and we're only building 23 and they got 180.
Right, right.
And so it was a, it was a complete redirection. I'd say where property owners, business owners coming in and asking for clarity and they're paying you to do it, that's a little different. Because they're saying, "I need to go so I can move forward on my project here and I'm going to pay for this." And it's a little more reasonable to say at that point, you know, this is information we got to get from the state or we get from the county or, you know, the DNR. It's different in that way because again, that's something that they're saying, "I'm paying for it, so let's keep this moving." The council agrees with that. The distinction there is here we have a significant difference on something we spent a lot of time on. And all of a sudden we're changing directions and it could be a significant amount of money to do it. And however, we added this whole new dimension to what's been discussed extensively. So is that clear to the council? Is that clear to the authority of Liz?
So then, yeah, so how would, so you don't want, I guess, what should we put in the packet then? Nothing? Or next, the next P&amp;Z? Because they're expecting an answer potentially? Or should I just be doing one day three?
Well, first of all, let's find out if they voted. If they voted, then it comes right back to us because they made a recommendation. If they hadn't voted, then it goes back to them saying that at this point the council isn't interested in changing these from what it was. So make a recommendation on what you received, which they had pretty much all in agreement. They discussed it thoroughly and said, "We're in agreement." They may not have voted.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Did Mr. Raesler agree with all this at one time? For all these, I mean, did he agree with what Liz had written down, had made the restrictions and what there had to be in the qualifications? He still, he didn't, he doesn't have a set, all this talk that we've done, he doesn't have all that information?
No, he, there's nothing that binds us as far as the lot parameters or anything, you know, really other than that average lot size and, you know, the two acre minimum and the overall average of two acres. So we were directed to create an ordinance. That was the first time he saw it. He didn't like it and proposed those 10 things.
Oh, I see. Okay, I understand that. So he had, when this was all going on, this was the first time he knew all the parameters you were putting down.
Right, and that's the way it should have worked.
Yes.
Because we have to agree as, you know, you have to agree as a council, as a city. Right, and then, and so, you know, part of the conflict is, is that, yes, if we allowed more homes, we'd have higher property values, but that's not what the council wants. We don't want it to look like necessarily suburbia is, you know, the feeling that I'm getting and what we had in our comp plan. So that's why Mayor's saying, we spent months working on that draft ordinance and then took it to P&amp;Z for the public hearing. And then, you know, then Mr. Raesler kind of threw a loop into it and it was, it's a very, you know, distinct deviation which through the planning commission killed it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I just want to say, Liz, Ms. Stockman has said that this is how the council wants to see the city. This is how my, my vision for the city is what the residents have told me. The residents have told me they don't want cookie cutter homes. They don't want, they don't want the two acres. They understand why we have it. But they don't want it to look like the homes over at Twin Lakes, by Twin Lakes School. They want it to stay rural. We, as a council, have always listened to the residents. And as Joel read from our comp plan, that's what the residents wanted. That's what they asked for and that's what we have. And this is somebody coming in and taking that and throwing it all out because if he gets these 10 things, it's cheaper for him to build a home so he, they can make more money, either him or whoever does it. And that's, that goes against what the residents have been asking for. That rural feeling, you know, we have never backed away from that. And I just, I believe we need to listen to our residents and our residents want that rural feeling and whatever development we have needs to be well planned out, well thought out, but still stay with the wishes of our residents. And again, I've never had a resident come in and say, "I want all these little tiny homes by me. Make me look like the stuff over by Twin Lakes." And not to say that's bad or anything like that, but I have yet to have a resident come in and tell me that.
And I appreciate Councilwoman Greenberg going to the hierarchy of our documents. The comp plan is our guide that we work down from. And so that is the right way to do it. Here's what we've agreed on for our 2040 plan, our ordinances and our zoning all aligned to support that. So I think it's important to thank you for articulating. And this is what we are hearing from the majority of residents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Part of the comments of the 10 was the heading of 10 Ways to Attract Development to Now Then. We just had the Greenberg Farm assessed in the last year and the assessor and realtor was quite surprised at the values of Now Then and it being a very attractive place, thus the values. I just talked to a realtor yesterday who lives in Now Then and that person said in the last two years, it's been phenomenal. We don't need to draw people here. They're drawn here already. They are marching at the door. They're knocking at the door to get into Now Then. There's going to be no problem attracting people.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Stockman.
I pulled up the planning zoning minutes and the motion was, continue the public hearing on both ordinances until October. All in favor. So there was no.
Okay. So they went through it and agreed to it, but they hadn't voted. So we'll get it back to finish the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And I just, knowing what that is and how vague that is, is another issue, to me, the commission not understanding the value of a motion and how detailed a motion should be. I provided Ms. Strike with some examples of previous motions that they made that were irrelevant to what was in front of them. So I, you know, going forward, who's ever sitting in these chairs needs to train, advise, I don't know what word, but is how to make a motion, what the motion needs to include so that when it comes to us or to staff, it's clear. Because to me, this is not clear. It's just to continue the public hearing, for what reason? There's no reason in that motion.
There was direction though. Alders requested that Stockman investigate how Raesler's 10 recommendations would impact Now Then. Stockman said she could bring back those accounts for P&amp;Z members to be able to compare and discuss.
But that isn't in the motion of why, the reason for continuing that public hearing, it should have stated why they were continuing it. But that's for another day.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Well, possibly if we wanted to move forward with that, we could find out from Liz right now which ones are non-negotiable, check those off and then possibly give our feedback on what might be areas that are non-negotiable. For example, Councilwoman Blake has talked about, you know, the possibility of a different front setback. So 100 feet versus 75 feet, do we split the difference at 85 feet? Things like that.
We've taken the hundreds, already come down to 120. That's just been reduced. So it was 120. So we split the difference between 120 and 75.
It could be here another two hours.
No, no negotiating.
I mean, it comes down to that, where we try and help Liz, our city planner, or we just let planning and zoning carry on with their motion? I think it comes down to that. Do we, do we say, do it? Or do we give our recommendations before she does it?
Council want to do?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I prefer we don't move forward with any of them. Unless Ms. Stockman can specifically state why she feels any of the 10 should move forward, whether it be in the RRA or RRT or specifically the RRT district. That can be brought back then to P&amp;Z and then they can move to recommend either approval or denial of the RRT zone. And then it's up to the council to decide.
Liz, you've gone through a number that were non-negotiable already. And you were talking about.
Right, and just a conversation with the city engineer. The impervious number two, we would not be negotiable on impervious surface. Number three, we would not, three and four, we would not be negotiable on right-of-way changes or street width changes. Number five, we could look at adjacent cities and compare buildability. I know we're not far off from one or two and then I believe what he's proposing here is similar to Oak Grove. The city engineers basically said that's here nor there. But to me, it's, I don't know, to me, it's not a burden necessarily. Yes, can you get a primary and a backup site and a house and a pole barn within 10,000 square feet? Yes, you can. But, you know, do we want everything squished together on these lots either? You know, people want usable area. I see issues every day. We've had variances where people are running out of usable area for their pole sheds. You know, typically your goal is not to issue the variances if you don't have to. And we have had to with some of these older lots and we don't want to make those mistakes again. Driveways, I said I could kind of go either way, but most of the time we have plenty of room for a 15-foot parking setback or driveway setback. If there are certain situations, we can make an exception in our ordinance.
Yeah, it's been our practice in the past too, that when you find people needing to request a variance or some kind of exception repeatedly for the same thing, that's when you look to change your ordinance. It was like, it's working for everybody, except now we're finding out that it's happening quite a bit. Then that's when we change the ordinance. As opposed to this particular lot can't do that, what can we do with it? So it's the exception rather than the rule. Once it starts becoming the rule, we change the ordinance. And I think that's been a good practice. Rather than assume the worst, make it, make it show its head and say, "This is happening all the time. We should change this."
Right. Well, for starters, I thought we had agreed, yeah, no changes to the RRA other than a couple areas that we had mentioned in the ordinance amendment. So what I'm saying now is the things that I've just gone through are referring to the RRT.
Okay.
And so we would say none of those first six apply to the RRA.
Correct. That would be my recommendation.
The front setback, you're saying from an RRT standpoint?
If you considered a lesser lot width, so you'd have a little longer lot, that may be beneficial to you in, A, backing up to Viking and St. Francis Boulevard. Might be making a nicer rear yard area so people have room to plant trees or whatever. It also may reduce, you know, well, it increases your spacing of streets with a longer lot. So your block, your blocks are farther apart, your streets are farther apart. May reduce streets overall. So we could discuss lot width and depth a little bit and then that would affect some, to me, kind of goes hand in hand with front setback. But yeah, I wouldn't, I don't think I'd go quite as low as 40 from the property line. No.
All right, so let's be definitive, not 40. It's going to be excess of that. So if we want to have a discussion on widths so that, again, we don't want it to be cookie cutter and we can say that in the land that's being developed, it's pretty much cornfield. It's easier to be cookie cutter. But in some places with wetlands and topographical issues, you want to have some flexibility in there. 75-foot of street frontage and dropping special driveway parking, I think we stick with the 15 feet at this point. Really what we're talking about, there can be discussion on lot width and setback, but it's not going to be 40 feet. And what's the side yard setback? What is it right now?
It's 20. We have a proposal 20. So I would say if you go down in lot width, you may want to consider the side yard a little bit lesser. Would not be unreasonable, but you wouldn't have to change it either because you still have width a lot wider than a suburban lot.
All right, so let's move forward. What do I do, council?
So item four under the RRT that he had at the very bottom, that was referring to requiring vehicles parked in the front and side yards on a paved surface and gravel being in the rear yard.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Again, it comes down to what are you looking at? If the narrower that the lots get, then having things parked on the grass might be less desirable. So I don't, that kind of comes into what are you looking at and having that visual again?
I think for your area consideration and your setbacks, a picture might help you. And maybe we just focus on that for planning and zoning and just create some little schematics of how that lot width narrowing is going to affect the land. is going to affect the layout of things and...
That's at least my kind of visual. I'm going, okay, here's what we're doing now, here's what we're proposing, and this is what it would look like if this changed or that changed. And I don't know how complicated that gets.
But we're still talking to the RRT.
Right, the two acres. How does two acres look at 300 feet wide versus 150? You know, or whatever. I guess he's proposing 200 feet at the building setback line versus 300.
So 300 feet, does that end up being two acres?
Well, see, we have an amount you have to have on the road, and then we have a lot width that you have to have where the building setback is. So it's 150 at the road, so if you have a curved road, it can angle back, and you can still get 300 feet wide at where your house is.
But yes, 300 by 300 is just over two acres, slightly.
But if we reduce the width, yeah, we could reduce the, or if we reduce the frontage and the width kind of simultaneously, we could talk about that.
Still has to be two acres.
Right.
So as council wished to approve Liz to give those visuals on the options on if there was adjustment in lot width setbacks, what would that look like for building septic? Additional vehicles, people out here are going to have additional vehicles. So what's that going to look like? What does the parking look like, impervious surface? So I mean, that's a reasonable response to, here's what I want. Maybe came in with 10 hoping to get four. But I don't know.
Well, if we go to the top one, where it's one through six, can we say that number five and number six are also non-negotiable? And we just leave number one negotiable? In the lower one through four, number one is negotiable. And that's also going to affect the side yard setback. And will it also affect the minimum street frontage?
Yeah, possibly.
And then number four, we make a non-negotiable. So the only negotiables are number one on the top, number one, two, and three on the bottom. And Liz used that as...
In the RRT.
In the RRT. And Liz present that to planning and zoning and say, well, these are the ones that council has said are non-negotiable. But we could, I'm going to give you an idea of what it looks like from the original proposition, which was 300. But if we shrink her down this way or this way, this is what it's going to look like. So she give a visual of the only areas that we think are negotiable, which is lot width and depth. This is just my idea.
Yes.
All right, 935, sounds like a plan, so. Council agrees that Liz will present that option to planning and zoning.
And as far as the front setback, should we settle on like 75 feet? And say it can't be any shorter than that? It can't be 40 for certain.
Let's see how it all looks.
Let's see how it looks, yeah, because it's hard to say.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else, Liz?
Oh, that's great.
I was trying to keep it moving, Lori, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. Are we, do we have any time limitations on this? Based on the agreement?
Well, the general rule is you're supposed to have the zoning adopted nine months after you approve your comp plan.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're getting close for sure.
Okay, but another month isn't going to hurt us.
But we're gonna, yeah, if we keep it moving, everything's a little slower with the live...
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, website design update.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan. I think Lori and Natalie have been working on the website, and I think at this time, I've seen a prototype that was put together of Wix, and it looks dramatically different than what we have right now. My question that was brought up was, are we losing any functionality by switching from Gov Office to Wix? And are we going to, or still have the functionality that we have now? And the functionality that we would have had if we would have went ahead with the proposed Gov Office upgrade that was, you know, that has been, they've been asking for us to spend the $10,000 on for a couple years. Based on the analysis and the prototype, I would want to make a motion to go ahead and make the conversion to Wix to save the $10,000 that Gov Office wanted, and as well as the annual maintenance fee.
I second that.
I have a second. And just to confirm, we've got the fact sheet in front of us. And it looks like Wix will do everything Gov Office will do. Gov Office can do much of what Wix can do, but in a number of cases, it would need to be upgraded, and that upgrade is $10,000. At $10,000, they might be equivalent. Or would you still prefer Wix? You worked with Lori and Natalie on this?
I've seen the prototypes, I've worked with the Gov Office tools. They're very similar with how you build and update and maintain the website. So I don't think we're, from what I'm seeing, we're not losing any functionality. That we get the plugins, extra plugins that we need from Wix, and Wix is probably more, call it commercially used than Gov Office is. Obviously, Gov Office has their niche. So I think, and so then the upgrade would be done in-house.
All right.
We wouldn't have to have Gov Office go through their conversion process.
She working one day a week? What's she doing these days?
Eight hours a week.
Eight hours a week. All right, so we've got the information in front of us. We're talking $324 a year versus $600 a year, and we're talking about any other cost for Wix? No initial cost for... Councilmember Ringo?
I want to thank Lori, I talked to her today. Thank you for your effort on this. It's something that this council and previous councils have asked of staff, and you listened to us, and you took the bow and ran with it. So I really appreciate that. I think that the residents will be very happy based on what we see here. I have just a couple questions. One is, what is the process of this change? How long does it take? Do you build a new one and then take the old one down? How does that work?
Mayor, Council, the prototype is already built. As Dan Bryan saw, it was very easily made, and the process is just switching it over.
Okay.
Making sure we have everything in there that we currently have. We're not missing any information. And we'll just convert it right over.
So it's not going to be banning all over again.
Pardon me?
Not going to be banning all over again.
No. Is there, does council have the ability to look at that prototype, just so we can see what it looks like?
Yes.
Is there a link you can send us?
I can invite Natalie to come, and she'd be happy to present the, she can show what the old version versus the new version. If you're interested in this and want to go this direction, she would be more than happy to come in. She's a marketing major, she is pretty talented that way. She can make some adjustments if you'd like, but I think you'll be pleased.
I'm excited.
Well, thank you, Lori, and also thank Natalie.
Yes, thank Natalie.
You know, from what I see, a breath of fresh air here, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
And as Lori mentioned, if we are switching the domain name to be nalvan.com or something different than whatever it is, there's no reason they both could be up and going for review and updating at the same time, and then eventually, it would just be switched.
All right. Other questions from the council? We want a motion.
We have one, Natalie.
We have one.
Oh, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thanks Natalie. And let us know the timeframe and the demo and whatever else is your main... All right, we have CARES update. Since we've got a couple of quotes in front of us, let's start with that. We have two quotes on the fire station. "One of the people submitting a quote last night pulled out. They changed their mind and they do not want to participate." So structural buildings is no longer fit in pursuing this. That does count as a valid second quote. I talked to the attorney today when they pulled out, said it is a valid quote, they just don't choose to pursue it at this point. So the second quote we have is up for the council to decide if they want to pursue this. I don't have the drawing here, but there's a drawing would be similar to what you see in the other quote. This would be a structure put on the outside of the existing fire station, between the fire station and the recycling center. And we're talking about 30 by 38, so 30 feet out from the building, 38 feet wide. The existing door to the fire station would stay there. The remaining proposal is a stick built, so it's going to be built more like a house rather than a pole barn. The primary is to get the turnout gear into a separate room out of the fire department, the fire bays. Would include a bathroom, a small kitchenette, a radio room with a window so they can see who drives up. So get the shell in. The condition of meeting the 15th of November is going to be dependent on the availability of product. Right now, with demand for building materials due to hurricanes and fires and civil unrest, that could be a limiting factor. That is something that the CARES money does have in it. There's three contingencies. It has to be used for COVID-related remediation. It needs to be done by the 15th. And the, one of the exceptions to that is if there's a disruption in the supply chain. So that is something, none of the people offering bids right now can tell us, is where that supply chain's going to be. So I ran that by the city attorney, and it's his contention, if they are able to do what they can, they have to explain the supply chain situation. But if we had a contract in place, his understanding is that is sufficient to say you've obligated the money. Their intention is to get the building up by the 15th. The attorney's understanding is it needs to be finished inside and out by the end of the year. But the contract would have to be signed prior to the 15th, and the work would have to be substantially completed safe for supply chain interruptions. So the remaining bid is for $167,500. The other bid was $169,900, I believe.
Yep.
$169,900. So relatively consistent. It's not going to be fancy, but it will be structurally sound and usable inside. The attorney has asked for a contract to be finalized, and the only thing that was missing on that contract, to my understanding this afternoon, was a payment schedule. And so, moving forward, the attorney said, if we wanted to pursue this, we would pursue it contingent on attorney review and approval. If the attorney says it doesn't go, then Lori and I don't sign it. But the council agrees that this is something we want to pursue, we would do it contingent on the attorney's approval. And then we wouldn't have to bring it back to another meeting. He would authorize the attorney to review, approve, and then Lori and I could sign it and proceed. So questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
If there are no questions, I would move that the council accept the proposal from North Country Construction and Remodeling for a dollar amount of $167,500 for the addition to the fire department, contingent on approval, review and approval by the attorney, including the payment schedule.
I'll second.
And to clarify, with that approval, then if, once the attorney approves, then Lori and I would be authorized to sign off on it.
Correct, yes.
Is this, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
This is CARES money?
This is CARES money.
Okay, should that be in the motion?
Yes, I'm sorry. So it's the $167,500 of CARES money. To clarify, so. And who's second to Dan?
Yep.
So that would be in the motion. We utilize $167,500. I will say that when we start talking about CARES money, that there will be attorney charges on this because the attorney was involved in the contract for structural builders and for North Country because he said there are certain municipal requirements. And so, as we get to the rest of our CARES money, we need to realize that this will be what the contractor gets, but there still will be permit fees. As the contract says, that a performance bond will be paid by the city. So there will be some additional fees the city has to pay out of the CARES funds for this. But this is what we would do for the contractor. And then we'll have to get a total from the attorney and from the performance bond to capture all the other CARES money related to this.
Mr. Mayor.
As we said, the attorney was working with both structural builders and North Country, so there will be fees. Councilmember Ringo.
Mr. Mayor, is there a possibility that the city could entertain, assuming those costs on our own and not using CARES funds?
There is.
So can we wait and look at what that dollar amount is and then make that decision, whether it's CARES or city funds?
Yes, we just have to have that done before the 15th.
Okay.
And our next council meeting is November 10th.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to use CARES money to upgrade the fire station to be in response to the pandemic? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second large item, we've had quite a roller coaster ride on the internet usage that we talked about last week. And so, again, waiting for a contract from ARVIC. But we have looked at the scale, and right now, in order to maintain the requirements that the installs for internet for ARVIC would be done by the 15th. We have targeted our contribution to be on the initial phase of this project. So at this point, we would focus on getting the cabinet set up in town and getting the backbone in, and then they would sell two to three dozen homes to begin with. And so, I would propose, again, that we take a look at utilizing $140,000 in CARES money to get the internet to get an arrangement with ARVIC, contingent on attorney review of their contract that was being worked on today. I would have the specifics of what they would commit to do by the CARES deadline. I would have the specifics of what they would commit to do by the CARES deadline and their performance requirements thereof. So I'll make a motion to use $140,000 of the CARES money to contract with Arvic to provide internet service, high-speed broadband internet fiber to the door in the area, initial area that we had discussed last week. So we would be starting in the northwest quadrant of that area south of Viking. And that would again be contingent on attorney review of their contract and obligation to meet the CARES deadline.
I'd second that.
Motion is second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bright.
Just a matter, there's more, there's some extra legal wording that needs to be there? Or because? I'm just trying to understand, because we haven't reviewed, because Bob hasn't reviewed the contract yet? Because we haven't actually got, received the contract from Arvic?
Right. So that is, I said, contingent on attorney review. So both of these projects would be contingent on. What additional would you like to see?
Okay.
Because I haven't seen the contract yet.
Right, yeah, we haven't seen the actual contract yet. So we just need to make sure that the attorney has gone over it.
Yeah, and Bob is making certain that his understanding of the CARES application is being met.
Okay.
And again, in addition to 140, there will be some attorney's cost with that. They can decide to pay that as a city or apply it to CARES funds. According to Bob, that is appropriate use because it's all related to the project. So as a council, we can decide how we want to pay that out. Any other discussion, questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. So. With that, with the assumption that there will be. I just assumed at this point, 170, 140 puts us at 310. We have 28,000 we've already spent. So that puts us at 338, which leaves us about $20,000. We have a recommendation here, potential for tables and chairs. I also have a recommendation from our consultant that since we would be shelling in the fire station, and there's a large training room in there, that we look at his recommendation from the list that he had provided and potentially consider that putting in an emergency operations center in that training room. So as we look at other opportunities to utilize the rest of the funds, we have, I don't know if you have a total on the tables and chairs?
Oh, I thought I put the total, sorry.
These chairs are $229 apiece?
$279 apiece. The reason I chose these, they were not easy to find, the stackable or with wheels and then the privacy in the front for your legs. So I was thinking of six tables at $279 apiece and then 10 or 12 chairs. And the chairs also stack, they're lightweight, they stack.
So six tables is going to be about $1,800 and 10 chairs is $230, so about $3,000. Let's see. About $3,000 for chairs and 1,800 for tables. So 5,000 roughly.
And Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
So because you've mentioned the EOC, is this for here or the EOC?
This is the first I've heard about the EOC.
Okay, so this is.
I was thinking for here.
Okay, thank you.
That's a text I got from the consultant, she's not copied on text, so.
Okay, I just, all of a sudden.
She's copied on the emails.
Okay, all right. This is for the city hall, okay. So I would, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
If there are no questions, I would move that Ms. Strickby directed to purchase the tables and chairs for city offices, or city hall, excuse me.
I second that.
So the question I have is what do we do with them? Are we going to stack them? We just don't have a place to put them. Would these be used by everybody? Because either committees and commissions and the council. But are we using them for rental?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I would prefer that they just be city use and that be explained to anybody that is renting the facility.
Well, for right now, if we cleaned out that corner of the kitchen, we actually could stack them in there. Because we've got the lion stuff and we've got an organ and a big table in there. So we could utilize that as a storeroom for this for now. We do have sprayers on order.
Mr. Mayor, is there, can we take out some of that stuff in that kitchen?
Yes, I would recommend we get rid of the organ.
Yes.
The lions could be moved downstairs. A big table, just taking up space. I mean, when the seniors get back in, we'll have to have something for them, but.
Yeah, the seniors do use that every, at their monthly meetings to put out things. So there would have to be something to replace that, but it, yeah, probably doesn't.
And you know, as we're looking at utilizing the rest of our funds here, when we were investigating HRA and EDA, there are modifications we can do to this building because of its community use and its senior use. So there's still some things we could do to make it more conducive. Not the big expansion we were probably talking about, but that might utilize some storage too. Because for right now, we have to clean everything because we don't know what was used. So we might be able to do something where we, on rental, maybe we even find a way of stacking these chairs that could be rolled back in there. When people rent it, then we don't have to clean what they rented. But for right now, I think we minimize the tables that are out. We ask who's ever renting it, how many they want, and then. Otherwise, really, we have to wash everything.
Mayor and council, we do have an agreement now with the rental that they are required to clean. And we're hoping that they are doing that. We do come in for an inspection afterwards before we give them back their deposit.
Good.
So.
Mr. Mayor, will we keep the tables and chairs that we have now? Or keep them for use in here?
Now, yeah.
Okay.
Because these would be just for the council at this point, council and commission.
Council and committee meetings?
Yep.
I would suggest that these blue ones be disposed of. And we would buy the new ones for council and committee use. And any reservations, use the plastic in the plastic. Not having to store these along the walls would, will free up floor space also. I think that they have.
Seniors won't like that.
No. But they, Mr. Mayor, I think we have to be a little sensitive to our seniors. Those are not very comfortable chairs for older people.
But the senior citizens, I will tell you, is we use the plastics.
I know, but I've been.
We don't use. What we use these for is when they're along the wall during conversation, visiting prior to eating. But when we sit down and eat, we use plastic in the plastic.
But they are, they do utilize them extensively when they're waiting to eat.
And maybe we think of a different chair for them, you know, and maybe the Lions group when they meet. Because we do probably grab these. So maybe think of an option for that, that is more of a stackable, but yet more comfortable, but not so cumbersome and not so, taking up so much floor space. Okay.
And we're good with this being here?
Are they still meeting, are they?
They are not meeting at this point and I don't know when they'll start again.
Okay.
Who are you talking about?
Have the seniors been meeting here?
Oh, no.
No, part of it is we just, we can't guarantee, you know, separation, we can't guarantee. We know we're cleaning, but we have to. All right. So at this point, you were talking six tables and these are how long? 60 inches? It'd be one, two, three, four, five, six, 60 inches.
Five.
Five feet.
Five feet. So that would, that'd be as big as we have here.
They do offer six-foot tables.
These are eight foot.
Yeah.
This is a six foot.
Yeah, this is on a six foot, which comfortably seats two, but if we're going to social distance, everyone would need their own, but we're ordering six.
Do you know how much the six footers are?
I don't. They are an increase, but I can find out how much more.
So we're looking. Well, I can't round it up on the other ones. If we did eight chairs. So 5,000, let's see how close we are to 5,000 if we go to the six footers. You said that was eight chairs.
I was thinking 12 chairs.
Or 12, I mean, sorry, yes.
We could go down to 10 chairs, we don't need 12. We could do 10. 10 would comfortably be council plus if we have the engineer, the planner, sheriff, myself. 10 would be fine.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, how many are climbing and zoning?
Seven and.
And less.
And staff, so nine.
Nine. So yeah, let's go with 10.
10 chairs, six foot tables.
Mr. Mayor, on the website, the 72-inch six-foot long tables are $298. It's the $279.
Yeah, well, let's go six foot.
20 bucks?
Yeah. Okay, six foot.
That still keeps us in the 5,000 range. And so then the other consideration, if these things come in and we want to take a look at the performance bond and the attorney's fees out of general fund, that would leave us approximately $15,000 for emergency operations center to get started with one. Talking with Jerry, he went to a seminar last week on CARES.
We vote on this motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a motion by Councilmember Rainville, no second yet.
Oh, Linda did.
I did, yeah.
Enthusiastically too. For being at 10 o'clock.
Yeah, I still have a lot of enthusiasm.
All right, any other discussion on the tables and chairs? We're looking at six, six footers and 10 chairs. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then, Mr. Mayor, can I ask council if they were willing to direct Lori to look at some options of other types of chairs for other people that are using the building, such as the seniors, the Lions, the festival uses it for their meetings? Just to come back at, you know, in the next month or two, on some options there.
All right.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, do you think that seniors and the Lions do, do you think we need to get them their own chairs? Or would we feel comfortable with them using the council chairs? I can see renting them out, you know, to just residents and other people. We will make sure they use the plastic, but I feel like we could be comfortable with the Lions and the seniors taking care of the city property. I'm more than willing to look it up, look at the pricing, but.
No, I think you're right.
I feel like they would be respectful, they're part of the community as far as volunteering.
I would agree with that, Lori. And I didn't mean that they would not.
I didn't take it that way.
I just was thinking something separate, but yeah.
More the cleaning and with those sprayers.
Lions are cleaning.
I'd love to have a discussion on sprayers. And that meant for indoor use, but. That's a separate issue.
Okay, all right, never mind.
So don't look into the technical shares?
We're fine for now.
All right.
Mayor and council, one more thing. I did talk to a couple of our plumbers, local plumbers, about changing out all of the faucets and toilets and to hands-free. And soap dispensers, towel dispensers, and every plumber that I talked to said they highly discourage it. They said it's very expensive. They require batteries, which need to be continually maintenanceed. And a lot of people smash them and take the batteries. If you do the toilets, the urinals, they, it's just a piece that you can take and walk away with and sell it online. They did give me some quotes. I didn't put them in the packet because I wanted to find out if you wanted to go that route. They, both of them said they just really don't encourage it, especially in the parks.
Well, I think given, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Given what appears to be a high cost and we've really expended our CARES money, it would be something we would look at down the road if we be.
I just wanted you to know, I did look into it. I do have a couple quotes, they're high. And they discourage it, they said they'll do it, but they didn't recommend it.
That's a reputable business, that'll tell you that, and that's great.
Correct, yeah.
All right. So that consideration with approximately 15,000 left, we could see what could be done to utilize this, these funds in an emergency operations center. As I started to say, Jerry was at a seminar on CARES funds last week. And public safety was given a carte blanche to utilize these funds. Public safety is number one right now. And in all of what's going on with the pandemic, they've been told to be aggressive. So it's on our list, Jerry's already looked at it as far as qualifying. So we can see what can be done. You know, the building wouldn't be up yet anyway, we just have to get the expenditure paid for before the 15th. So if the council is amenable to that, I could work with Jerry on that and make recommendations, Jerry and Lori, and make recommendations as far as emergency operations center in the newly remodeled exterior of the fire station.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bright.
I would just potentially not recommend buying any computer equipment until we know we're up and running, because who knows what's going to be around? With upgrades and prices and et cetera.
Yeah, I think he might, you know, what he was talking about originally was, you know.
Projectors.
Wiring for technology.
Right, yeah.
Furniture.
I would just.
He'd probably be looking at something similar to what we're looking here for, maybe a lesser version of the tables and chairs, but similar to what they have probably in Ramsey in the, where we meet for the fire boards.
But yeah, depending on whatever else is there. Because yeah, there was a lot of stuff that, a lot of things, screens, et cetera, screens and furniture that, you know, could be, were probably easily use up the rest of the CARES act money.
All right. So council amenable to that?
Yes.
Yes.
Come back with a recommendation? All right. Lori, anything else on CARES? And council, anything else on CARES at this point? Okay, the last thing I had on the list was the fire department well. We have a quote in hand from Renner. We have been, we've asked Mark Weld to quote, and they deferred, said it was a bigger project they want to take on, and they're busy right now. They recommended, our second quote comes from a company in St. Cloud. There was conversation with them this week, sounds promising, but we're still waiting to see their quote. We would like to see this going before cold weather sets in, so I will wait for the motion until Mary gets back. At this point, we'd be looking at the well being approximate to our hockey rink and utilizing the dirt road from $199 down to the fire station as a pass-through for fire trucks. So they would come in one way, fill with water, and go out the other way. We're able to also be utilized, be able to utilize that for flooding our rinks, we didn't have to keep running down to Mark Weld to fill trucks. We need test wells, to find out if there's enough water flow there to quickly fill the truck, we have to have 500 gallons per minute, and so we need to see if there's enough water flow or if we have to have additional pumps. So we have a quote in place, we're waiting for a second quote. One option is to have a not-to-exceed price, and if the second quote comes in within that price, then we would start with a test well, and the council's approval, otherwise we wait until November 10th, and then we have to start a well, which can be done in wintertime, but it's a lot more difficult. So if we get a reasonable price now, we could authorize a test well and get, once the test well is satisfactory, we could start with the final one. So at this point, if we can get a not-to-exceed price of $75,000, I would recommend that I work with Jerry and the well company to proceed with the well. If it's in excess of $75,000, we'd come back to the council. So I will move accordingly.
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bright.
Yeah, so basically, it's a matter of, I mean, we're going to have to have the well somewhere, it's either all going to come out of one pipe or several and then stored so that the volume is there, that, that's the challenge that we're having right now with this, with, just now and then the way that the geology works, so that's where the challenge comes in. But the only way we're going to know for sure is to get that, to have the test wells, and then they can decide, then we'll be able to know if there's enough from one well, or we might need a couple to kind of share the, share the water so we have the right amount of pressure.
Volume.
Volume, yeah.
Lori, do you know what we put in the budget for well?
Was it $80,000?
Eighty?
I believe so.
Can I amend my not-to-exceed then to 80?
I will second. I will second your amended motion.
Not-to-exceed 80, and if the numbers come in, we'd start with a test well as soon as the company could start. If the test well comes in with the proper flow, then we would move on to the completed well. We voting? Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You want to let that documentate you have there, that was pulled because it was entangling the ability for Arbig to meet the deadline on the CARES money. So separated that out, that's why that's, that was pulled out of the packet. Mary did manage a lot of work with the county, the county just managed to sort of work on her behalf, but at this point, it would confuse getting our project done on time to meet the CARES criteria, so that's scrap. All right, anything for the good of the group?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I do have a question on the strike is, and I hate to say, hate to ask, because it just means bad weather, but where are we on snowplow drivers?
Well, right now, I think we're going to bring back Dana, we're going to ask if he would come back, that was the plan we just talked about, until we know what his answer is. We may be looking for somebody.
Okay, so should we, to forward thinking, should we give you the ability to advertise for snowplow drivers, and then you make the recommendation to us and, rather than wait till November and could be?
Sure, like I said, the plan is that Dana would come back, and he sounded interested, but I need to confirm that. If he's not, then it would be nice to have approval to go out for.
And if he comes back, you don't need any additional at this point?
He's always just come back every year as a seasonal.
Yeah, I'm saying, if he does come back, like we would expect he would.
Right.
You wouldn't need additional.
Right.
Okay.
But let's give her the ability to be able to post if need be, if Dana says no, rather than wait.
All right, so the council agrees that?
Yes.
All right. That being said, we went really long, but got a lot of work done tonight.
Yeah, we did.
Appreciate the hard work on people's part, the patience, the prayers, and there's nothing else. Councilmember Bright, motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion to second, we are adjourned, 10:20.